Welcome, welcome to our Poetry Town Council meeting for our beautiful town of Poetry, Texas on March 21st, 2023. We welcome you and want you to feel heard, valued, informed, and connected to your town and its council. We welcome diversity of opinion and want minority views as well as majority views to be heard. We also appreciate mutual respect despite opposing view. Your opinions, suggestions, and comments in favor of or against a topic are welcome. At this time, I need to remind the public that a disruption of this meeting may be considered a criminal offense according to Texas Penal Code 3813 and 4205. You must be signed up to speak during the meeting and stay on topic according to state law. To preserve the order and decorum of the meeting, any person who makes profane, slanderous, threatening remarks or becomes disruptive during the meeting will be asked to leave. Right now, we have roll call by Mr. Jana Shelton, City Secretary.
Okay, Mayor Tara Sinkovit.
Here.
Councilman Tom Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Jaffe.
Here.
Councilmember Simeon White.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Fowler.
Here.
And Councilmember Brian Benson.
Here.
And quorum is confirmed. Thank you, Jana. At this time, we ask you to stand up and Pastor Kevin Kelly will lead us in the pledge and then invocation.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Almighty God, we just thank you for the gift and privilege that we have to be able to serve you, our Creator, our Lord, and our sovereign. As sovereign, we understand, Lord, that you cannot be compartmentalized into the sacred and the secular, that you are Lord of all things. So therefore, we pray this evening that our conversations, our comments, and the direction of this meeting would honor and glorify you, Lord. That everything that we say, everything we think, and everything that we do would be for you and for your glory. From Psalm 62, rest in God alone, my soul, for my hope comes from him. He alone is my rock and my salvation, my stronghold; I will not be shaken. My salvation and glory depend on God, my strong rock. My refuge is in God, trust in him at all times, you people. Pour out your hearts before him. God is our refuge. Common people are only a vapor, and important people an illusion. Together on a scale, they weigh less than a vapor. Place no trust in oppression or false hope and robbery. If wealth increases, don't set your heart on it. God has spoken once; I have heard this twice. Strength belongs to God, and faithful love belongs to you, Lord, for you repay each according to his works and all God's people said.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Okay, at this time, we'll have items of community interest. Reminder, we need, if you have not registered to vote, you need to register to vote by April 6th. Meet the Candidates Night is set for Tuesday, April 11th, at Poetry Community Christian School from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. The town currently is taking candidates for those who might want to voluntarily annex into the town until March 31st. You can email at contact@poetrytexas.org for more information. A big shout-out thank you to Councilmember Anderson for building and installing stairs for the town hall. And Michael Whitfield donated time to weld the fence of the town hall, and Longmont Organics has donated labor to mow the leased parking lot in the front of the town hall lawn. So thank you to those people. At this time, we have, we'll move on to G reports. Okay, our usual expenditures from our bank balance minus the account numbers, of course, we have the beginning bank balance of $42,051.32. Deposit by card for their franchise fee, it was a little late, $1,384.50. We had withdrawals and debits, mainly office supplies and stamps. We did have the Terrill Tribune publishing that was required for $152. Checks paid, one more FEC reimbursement that finally was cashed, Texas Municipal League, the secretaries pay, Faith Temple, the Hunt County Project Sheet Number 5 went through, and then our legal team. Payment. So that's an ending balance of $31,580.39. We're set to be funded again this next week. Remember, we're funded about every quarter, so this does not reflect the incoming for next week. Additionally, Secretary Teresa and I worked on the profit and loss budget versus actual. So this is for the town's Quarter 1 and Quarter 2. Again, the Quarter 2 will end next week, at the end of March. So on this, you can see that on the income, we've only received one quarter's income so far, and that was 2.6% over what we had anticipated. And then on the waste franchise fees, that was 6.1% over what we anticipated. So that's not too bad. On the expenses, we're at around 31% of the expenditures for the secretarial wages, and that's because we've been without a secretary for a lot of months. But, so we're only a third of our budget on that. And then the legal fees were right at 46.6%. And the, we're at, can't go over all these numbers. On road repair, we are at 7.2% over what we had slotted for this time. And then for the elections, we're at 13.1% over what we had slotted on the budget for that. So our total expenditures are about 41.5% of what we anticipated, so we're still well within our budget. Is there any comment?
So do we have the liabilities of the outstanding FEC checks in this?
It's included, but it's not necessarily on this sheet.
Okay. Do we have a timestamp on our checks that's going to give us some kind of closure on that liability?
Well, every time we do in reconciliation, it'll show the outstanding. And I think, that's a good question. I can get with Teresa on checking that. Most of them have gone through, I believe, at this point.
Okay.
There's just a few, you know, and they're, you know, remember, they're usually, the average is what, between $10 and $40. It's not that significant.
And the only other question I had was, I get, we have quarterly, I guess, deposits into our account, but it seems like we're tracking on schedule on income, but we're at 41.5% of total expenses, so we seem to be out-tracking our expenses.
Well, again, if you've only received a quarter of your income and it's half the year, then...
You think we'll level out after this?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Well, I mean, you know, so by next week, we'll receive encore and FEC franchise fees. They do a draft, or an ACH deposit. And, you know, we were 2.6% over what we anticipated, so if it tracks the same, you know, it depends on the weather, though, too. If it's super cold and you have higher utilities, then we receive more revenue.
That's all I got.
Anything else? Okay. So going on to two, the secretary's report, Ms. Jana.
All right. I've been working for the county poetry now for about a month and a half, and I'm just going to report kind of general surmises of what I've come to find out. Office operations are going smoothly, as you, as everyone knows. The space is very small, but the equipment is there, and the Sinkovits have been very gracious with refreshments and making me feel comfortable, so everything is going really well in the office. On the agenda tonight, I will ask for a decrease in my office hours because I will be assisting my daughter, who has to go back to work full-time, so I'm going to be asking for, to work from home for a little bit and attend the meetings and continue to work for the town of Poetry. So I hope that everyone's gracious with that request. As far as financial reports go, as you've seen, Ms. Mayor Sinkovit gave reports on the financials. In my experience, you guys are getting a lot more information than a lot of councils do. Usually, you get a budget versus actual and a cash balance report every quarter. So I, you know, I see very open government going on here. I don't see any real big loopholes of any kind. It's pretty much, you know, you guys get to see the invoices and approve the invoices. You've got control over what the mayor spends, so I see a lot of good things going on here, really. And also...
Jana, could you get a little closer to the microphone, please?
Certainly. Sorry about that. And also, I wanted to mention, and this is just an idea for the council, what really works good in a small budget is, you know, planning, and a one, three, five-year plan would go really good for you guys. I think if you set small goals for your one, three, one year, and then check those goals every year, and then had bigger plans for your three and five, that, that might, you know, make things go a lot easier. That's worked with a lot of councils that I've worked with. You know, you get to see those goals that you set for that one year and achieve those goals, and everybody feels better about it. So that's just a suggestion from me. And that's all I have on the secretary's report right now.
Okay. Thank you, Jana.
Thank you, Jana.
Any comments from council on that?
Yep. Nice to, nice to hear from our secretary and sort of get updates like that. I very much appreciate the hard work she's putting in and the transparency. And even if we are a little over the top, I think it's good and I think it's probably necessary to kind of heal up as a town, so appreciate you doing all that.
I amend to that.
It's been wonderful to have her. So, and of course, we're in the election cycle, and so she's been working hard and hard and fast on all the election paperwork. There's just a plethora of paperwork for that. So, okay, moving on then, number three, upcoming election report.
All right. And we have worked on a lot of election notices. We have two counties, so that's a little different for me, but we've got our notice of election that went to both counties, and now that will be published in the April 6th Terrill Tribune paper and also on our website and in our newsletter. April 6th is the last day for all you to, that are candidates, to file your first report of campaign expenditures and contributions. I know a lot of candidates file that upfront, but April 6th is your last day to do your first report. April 6th is also the last day to submit your registration to vote. Now, if any of you folks had a hard time voting in the last election and had to do a provisional vote, I would go ahead and call the county, either Hunt or Kaufman. Their numbers are listed on their websites, but the number, I also have that number, and we'll publish that. I think it's already been published on our website also. So give those people a call if you've had to do the provisional voting. That way, you can get that straightened out, because I know that's irritating when you go to vote, and you feel like your vote's not being counted, so that's pretty important. We are currently uploading all the pictures and bios for all the candidates. We just have a few more to get in, and those will be complete. I think that's a really neat deal that you guys do that for candidates and put that on the website. It lets you get to know those folks before you go vote. Meet the Candidate Night is Tuesday, April the 11th, at 6:00 p.m. at the Christian Community School right here in Poetry. So we invite everybody to come out and meet the candidates on that night. Early voting begins April the 24th, so on that notice of election, you'll see the list of voting places for early voting and times, and also, Election Day is May the 6th. I also wanted to talk about donations and placement of election signs around the, around the town of Poetry. I believe Terry, were you the one that wanted to talk about that, or was that, it was banners that were donated?
No.
Oh, the just encouraging us to vote?
Well, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the red signs.
Yeah, the, a citizen requested, and he said it didn't mine, Chad McFarland has printed signs and asked to attach them to our city limit signs in the ditch, and of course, I couldn't give him that approval. So it's, it's a simple, non-judgmental, just says, here's the dates, early voting dates.
Just to give the information.
I just couldn't give him the answer to attach it to the city property. I don't have a problem with it, though.
So the question is to attach it to where?
All the city limit signs, basically. Drive one T-post and use the city limit sign as the other anchor point. So that should get all gateways into Poetry.
So you're...
The city limit, you want to attach them to the city limit sign?
Or the speed limit?
Well, not permanently, just put them next, just...
Speed limit.
Yeah, next to it.
Yeah, next to it.
So is that in the right-of-way? Isn't that against the Texas ethics?
Yeah, no, you can't put it in the right-of-way.
You can't put them in the right-of-way?
No signs can go in the right-of-way.
Yeah, so according to Texas ethics, you're not supposed to put them in the right-of-way, I think. Although, I mean, I'm for getting the word out and everything, but we don't want to, we'll actually move them, remove them, if you put them in the...
So you might put them in, you know, private property where you have permission to put them on.
Okay.
That's what I would do, to stay out of that right-of-way. And that's all I have on my report.
I wanted to ask you, you mentioned that everybody's bios weren't up. Out of fairness for all candidates, can we take the other ones down until we can publish them live all at the same time?
The deadline already passed, though.
I understand, but, I mean, if I'm Tom and my bio questions are not up, do I have a grievance?
I think Tom's working on his, so he's going to get that to me in the next few days.
Yeah, I apologize. I didn't get mine up, but I'll send it off to Jana tomorrow.
So the deadline was the 17th, and I think that they didn't put them up until Monday, and so I don't think we should...
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think Tom...
It's up to you, though.
Okay. I think we're only waiting for Tom, so I think when Tom sees Usian, we'll pop it up there, and we'll be all right.
Okay. All right. Moving on to H, consent agenda. We've got the minutes from February 13th, 2023. Unless there's something besides a few typos, all those in favor accepting the minutes as written, raise your hand, and that passes unanimously. Item two, minutes from February 1st, 2023, except for maybe a few typos, and if you have any typo corrections, you can give those to Jana, and she can correct those. All those in favor of accepting the minutes as written, and that passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to I, the regular agenda. Okay, consider and take action on the Saturday, April 15th, as a spring cleanup day. So the secretaries, I think, have been working together on contacting the solid waste vendors who are approved vendors in town, and they have been gracious. I think our last one was December, and so when we were putting up signs, we realized that Poetry Road, or Legline Road, or 249, 2458, all the names of that road. That road is in desperate need of attention. It is, I mean, I picked up a whole bag of trash, I think, in like 10 minutes. It's quite, it needs some attention. But, so do you know, Jana, if, have you heard back from them on that?
I have followed up with those two, but I'm going to have to call them again.
Okay, okay. So I think this last time, it was Card and AWT, who provided a dumpster, and then the time, but last year, it was Titan, and the others contributed to that. And it was Titan and Reed, so, and then the others contribute to the cost of that, so we have at least two dumpsters usually, or the last two, I should say. Okay, any council conversation?
What's the location this time around? Have we, or is it just going to be at the town hall property, or is it going to be...
In December, we had it at the campground location because it was a good location. It's kind of center of town, and...
Yeah, I think it's a superior location, but have we asked them for permission now?
I have not asked them yet, and the last one was in December, and they didn't have a, or I asked the president, Wesley Killian, he didn't have a problem with it. I haven't heard any negative on that, so perhaps we approve it pending that? So...
Make a motion, we approve the April 15th date as a spring cleanup date contingent on getting a container, because we need a place to put the trash, and also getting permission from campground to locate the dumpster there for a couple of days.
One second.
Okay. All of those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Okay, and there were no comments on that one. Okay, number two, consider and take action on paying the invoice for Nichols, Jackson, Dillard, Hager, and Smith LLP for $830.74 for the month of February. And he has no problem apparently with us posting that, so he's an open book, so who, any comments on that?
So, yeah, we're allowed to discuss line items on here, then, just to be...
It is in the packet, and...
All right, perfect. I was just going to ask the attendants at the meeting, the county commissioner for Kaufman, you know, that's obviously the biggest expense on there. I was just going to ask, is that for the Kaufman interlocal agreement?
Yes, we've been, so Mayor ProTim, Tom and I have attended that meeting and been trying to get the interlocal agreement set for two years instead of one year, just similar to what we did with Hunt County. And so we had, I think, a good meeting, and I just received back after our deadline, though, Deborah Bonner had, the assistant DA, had put her, had sent it back, and then, so the next thing is to put it on our, on our agenda for next month, so...
Sounds good.
Yep.
I mean, that's just a solid investment, right? Because roads are definitely a big expense.
So it's refreshing to see an invoice under $1,000. Okay, we have no citizen comments on that one, so is there a motion?
I'm going to approve.
Okay. We have a motion by Fowler. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by White, and on paying this invoice for Nichols, Nixon, Nichols, Jackson, Dillard, Hager, and Smith for $830.74 for the month of February. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Okay, number three, discuss and review legal performance to our town for the first 90 days as voted upon. So when we hired this firm, namely David Berman, it was contingent upon a 90-day review, and so here we are. It's been 90 days, and so, any discussion on that?
I guess I would start with you. What's your relationship with Berman?
Well, you know, he was the one that I originally wanted to hire before we got our previous law firm, but he had a conflict of interest at the time, and so we couldn't hire him. I found him at that time to be very knowledgeable, and it was disappointing, of course, that there was conflict and we couldn't hire him, but, I mean, the three months that we've had him, he's been very attainable, very approachable, very, I mean, he got the right-of-way done, like, within, my goodness, it was just one or two days, and then he's been very, just very easy to, to, like, for instance, when he came to the meeting with Kaufman County, he was very willing to be there, and he showed up early, and only charged us for an hour, so, and it was, you know, it was a good hour, and then he was there, like, early, so, and it was quite the drive. So he's just been very, I think he's been very, very agreeable.
I guess I'd add, without divulging anything confidential, is that he has given us good advice on how to keep our legal expenses low, and I really appreciated that, is that I felt like his advice was good, and it's taking money out of his pocket, but on the other hand, he apparently thought it was the right thing to do, and it was information we hadn't always received from our prior attorneys, so I thought that was really good.
And, of course, he, he was correct. He sent, he was able to send us the government local code, which does indeed say that the counties can spend money in the cities, and so he was, he did, he did call that out, and so that was very powerful, because their longstanding policy in Kaufman County has been that they just don't. But it is legal to just absolutely, it's our tax dollars, so they absolutely can, so...
I've been pleased with his performance and all my interactions with him. I've been good.
Yeah, so it's fine. I mean, he seems to know what to worry about and whatnot, too, as well. I think his little catchphrase, at least from what I could tell, is, "Don't worry about it." Don't worry about it, which I appreciate, because if we were worried, then we'd hire him to do more work and pay him more. But, no, he seemed very solid, very solid.
Well, it's refreshing to me also to get invoices monthly. I don't have to stress about, oh, my goodness, how, when is that going to pop up? So just, just that alone has been very refreshing to actually get an invoice and in a timely manner. And then, he's, we know that he is a senior attorney. He, you know, as he said, he would be a partner, but there's a lot of names there already, so, he's been there for decades, and he is very knowledgeable, and he doesn't charge us for all the underlings. Like, he takes that out of his own salary, so whereas some law firms will charge you the paralegal, the secretary, the clerk, you know, and it can be three times the cost, he's just charging us for his hour, and that's it. So that's refreshing as well. Okay, we have one citizen, Chad McFarland. Okay. any, anything else on that? Okay, that was just to discuss that and review. Okay, so going on to the item four, discuss and take action on potentially changing the April 18th meeting date. I think there was someone who had a conflict, and we have to vote on that, because our regular scheduled date is the third Tuesday of each month, and so the Meet the Candidate Night is 11th, and then our regular scheduled is the 18th, and so...
Yeah, that was me. That was me. For the first time in forever, I just am not available, the 14th through the 20th, and I really hate to miss a meeting, because I haven't so far, and that could be the last one, who knows? So I, I don't want to miss that, if possible. Now, I know the Tuesday before, April the 11th, is the Meet the Candidates Night, so that's probably a bad time. Yeah, right? Could you imagine doing that and this? No, thank you. So perhaps the 11th or the 25th, 24th, 27th. I know Wednesdays wouldn't work for the church, so those were the dates I had in mind.
The 25th is the fourth Tuesday of April, so Mr. Gillie, do you know if the church has any conflict on that time?
Tara, the 24th is a Monday.
I mean, the 25th, excuse me. Did I say the 25th?
25th is a Tuesday.
Yeah, 25th.
I have a conflict on that day.
Okay.
I'm at the fire station that day.
Okay.
So 24th, 27th, for what I can't do.
Well, I was just suggesting maybe the 13th, 25th. We previously talked about the 20th. Is that not available for somebody?
The 20th is a Thursday, and of course, I think that's, Simeon's going to be out that entire week.
Oh, okay.
So we've got, Mr. Fowler is out on the 25th, so that doesn't work for him, and then how about the 27th?
What about the 24th? That's a Monday.
Mondays don't work too well for our city secretary. I'm trying to... I'm trying to honor her, her request. We need to keep our secretary badly.
I'm available whatever date. Likewise.
Okay, so.
Twenty-seventh's fine.
The twenty-seventh works for you. Okay, is the twenty-seventh work for everybody?
Perfect.
That's a Thursday night.
Twenty-seventh is okay.
So Mr. Gillie, is the twenty-seventh acceptable to the church? Okay, all right.
Thursday.
That is a Thursday, okay. So is there a motion?
Well, can we still have all of the paperwork and packet and everything by the?
By the twentieth?
Yeah, so it gives us some time to actually be prepared.
I don't know, um, because then that puts.
It would be the thirteenth.
Okay, so, um. So normally the deadline for submitting an item would be ten days prior.
Five days.
And then, um, so I don't know. Because of that pushes things back. We'll do the best we can, how's that?
Wait a minute, we're pushing the meeting further, aren't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're pushing the meeting further.
So if we pretend like we're having it on the regular day, which is what we're accustomed to, then we'll be getting it early enough for what you're asking, right, Brian?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so let's just stay on the regular cycle, we're just gonna meet late.
What's your thought on that, Dana?
I mean, she's not disappearing, she's still here on the regular cycle. Like the only one leaving in view, right, you're taking.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so, um, is there a motion for that?
On the twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we moved the eighteen, April eighteenth meeting to Thursday, April twenty-seventh.
Second.
Can we clarify that the packet will be available, whatever date that is?
So you rec, okay, just recognize that if you do that, then all the, I think, all the deadline for putting things into the meeting would be, um, we normally would send out the packet on the Thursday, the thirteenth, and the deadline would be the sixth, is my understanding, so.
That's fine.
Okay, so even though you don't have a meeting until the twenty-seventh, you have to have all the, all your items into this, by the sixth. Okay, just wanna clarify.
That gives us the normal amount of time, because we're on a regular schedule tonight.
Right, okay. All right, so there's a motion by, who made that motion?
Well, Tom made the motion, I was just asking if you would amend that, Tom, to stipulate that the packets will still be available on the thirteenth to council.
And then council will look at them and if there's any, any typos or errors, then they can let us know. They'll have plenty of time to do that.
Did you hear that, Tom?
No.
I said, would you, would you amend your motion to stipulate that the packets will still be provided to council members on the thirteenth, regularly scheduled?
Okay.
So we'll have them extra early this time, which will be fun, that'll be good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll second that motion with the amendment.
Okay, so we have a motion by Anderson, seconded by council member Jaffe, to amend the regular meeting for April eighteenth, to move it to Thursday, April twenty-seventh, with having packets available on the thirteenth to council members. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously.
Thanks, everybody.
Yep, perfect.
You're welcome. All right, number five, discuss and take action with Kaufman County resolution opposing special districts. So Kaufman County is, I think, having, they are having explosive growth, as you've read and heard. They are trying to, this says Kaufman County is currently the fastest growing county in the state and country, as ranked by the US Census Bureau. So it's not just the state, but it is the entire country. Whereas the city government and county government should have the appropriate authority to regulate growth in their respective cities and counties. And whereas Kaufman County has an ample supply of water and wastewater disposal via already existing water districts, municipal utility districts, special utility districts, and water companies. And whereas special districts have been improperly used by certain developers to avoid compliance with county and city infrastructure plans. And whereas developments that overload existing infrastructure diminish the quality of life and increase the financial burden for all citizens in Kaufman County. Now therefore, be it resolved that the undersigned elected officials do oppose the formation by a developer of any and all special districts in Kaufman County. And they're asking all the mayors to, of the cities in Kaufman County, to co-sign on this. And Jakey Allen, the county judge of Kaufman, will sign it as well with the commissioners. So, any thoughts?
I, I guess the one understanding is, my understanding is, is it says no legal basis for stopping anything. It's just a desire, is that correct?
Well, it's a resolution, a resolution does not really have much teeth, that I understand. It's, it's, it's not an ordinance, but it is a statement that, it's a statement.
Okay, we don't wanna overdo what it really says.
This is just following Rockwall County, Rockwall County passed it last month. And it's an official statement saying that all these elected officials are against it. There's nothing legally binding, but you do see the state senators' names on there that if ever it was a, a, a house bill or something, you would probably have their support, but it's just a statement.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah.
Yes, it does have Bob Hall, a place to sign, Texas State Senator Keith Bell, Texas State Representative, then all the mayors of Kaufman County. It's, it's a statement.
And for. I guess, it's what I heard at the meeting in Terrell yesterday, this is by the mayor, or the city manager, is that these mud districts don't go to the counties or cities, they go straight to the T E C Q. They bypass us, which the way they were using, Terrell was using this, is to justify some of their land annexation. Because they said they have no control over what these mud districts can do or even get approval. Or at least, that's what I understood when I was there last, yesterday.
Well, the other thing they said, Tom, because I was there as well, was that quite often these facilities are set up substandard in low-lying areas and the wastewater can leach into the creeks and things. So it sounds like in some cases at least, they're irresponsibly set up so that they can get the okay to put developments in, but they don't really meet what most of us would expect the guidelines to be. I mean, putting sewage in a creek is not okay, ever.
Well, what they, they were saying, at least when I was there, is that it was, it goes to the T E C Q? I believe I'm saying that right.
T C E Q.
And it's their vote that counts, which, for better or worse.
And that stands for Texas Quality of Environmental, um.
Yes.
Texas Commission on.
Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, something like that.
Something like that.
Um, so it should be looking out for the environment. But the effusive water does go into the dry creek beds and.
Anyway, I support it, but I just, no one should be disillusioned that this is any teeth, it really doesn't, I don't think.
That, that makes sense, I was gonna ask about that, because I did know that this is independent of, really even the counties to some degree, so it's good clarification, and yes, those muds have plenty of problems. Very poor maintenance, too, even if they set it upright, hardly anybody's actually looking after them. So, I mean, maybe we should even suggest Hunt County doing something like this, because if this is gonna, this weight people, just knowing that there's a resolution against it, then.
Well, I think somebody may have already made this point, but I think if somebody does decide to go lobby Austin, this certainly would have some.
Might have some merit.
Power, right, because we can say, listen, we are united.
United in the.
Every town in this county against these things, so we would appreciate, so, you know. I don't think there's, I was trying to take the opposing side and think of why we wouldn't wanna sign it, but we're against any kind of hodgepodge development, so I don't, I can't imagine any reason why I wouldn't wanna go ahead and throw our name on there, I don't think it costs us anything.
Well, you, saying all this, I just, anybody know, is the T E C Q, are they appointed by the governor? Or are they elected? I don't know.
Kevin, you're our expert, you know how T C E Q gets? Yeah, I don't either, I mean, I hear their number, or their name thrown around a lot, but I don't know much about them.
Okay.
And I know that, that homeowners oftentimes are unaware of all the cost involved in those, when they move in. They're, you know, they're blindsided by a lot of the cost, because they can tax in addition to all the property taxes they get, the, the cost, and so.
Well, you know, and it's not poetry, but I know a recent incident up in Josephine, that I'm personally aware of, where a large developer was under contract to purchase thousands of acres of land, but they were informed by the town of Josephine, there was no way they could get utilities to that area anytime soon. And so the developer backed out of the deal. So the land is still farmland as a consequence of that, because they were not gonna be able to provide any kind of infrastructure, so, you know.
And by the way, Terry just looked it up, they are appointed by the governor, it looks like six-year terms. And then secondly, there is a, I saw where apparently there's a mud district meeting Thursday in Rockwall at the Hampton Inn. I think it's at seven o'clock tonight, Thursday night, and it's regarding a proposed mud district in somewhere close to five forty-eight. If anyone's interested.
It's not our little development over there, is it?
No.
That's another one.
They've already passed that, I'm pretty sure, they got their one resident in there.
We do need to stay on topic.
Yeah, well.
Okay.
But I have some direct involvement with mud districts, if you'd like to hear it.
So I know that you are an expert in that, but let's go ahead and take our, Chad West? Okay, Patrick Smith? Okay, and then we'll just, if, I know that you are an expert in that, so if you could just give us like a couple of minutes synopsis and then.
Glenn Strauss, eleven oh seven two County Road, twenty-four fifty-four in Poetry. I was a property tax consulting guy for thirty years and I ran into a whole bunch of muds, metropolitan utility districts down in the Houston area. Muds are the last result of developers that can't get service any other way. So they set up their own little utility, and the numbers are based on the subdivision selling out. So happens a subdivision gets half sold out. And that, where, you know, your typical county tax rate's about a half percent, city's about a half, uh, schools are about one and a half, something like that. I saw mud district tax rates of eight, nine, and ten, and twelve percent. And I saw some bankruptcies too, because subdivisions didn't sell out. So when anybody just support the utilities, so it went bankrupt, so. That's kinda old information, but that's, that's what I know about muds.
Okay, thank you, and then I think often, if they don't sell out, then it goes to section eight housing sometimes, is what I've been told. Okay, so, is there a, a motion on this?
Yes, but I'd like to also, I don't know, this may be off-topic enough, you'll have to tell me that we can't do it, but I'd like to reach out to Hunt and just make a suggestion that they do something similar, because they are half of our town after all, and if we can include them in this.
So I had thought of that as well, and I thought, well, if it passes tonight, then, why not?
All right, well, as long as we.
Yep.
I make a motion to pass this resolution.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by White and seconded by Anderson to accept this Kaufman County resolution opposing special districts, all those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Okay, going on to number six. We have discuss and take action on the closet where the tarp has been for seven months for thirty-seven ninety-seven plus ten percent in case of material item changes for prevention of potential damage to a town hall building. So item six is, and I have on the proposed phase budget. Never anticipated to be behind a tarp for seven months, but here we are. And the fellow who gave us a quote on that is actually being very generous to our town. He was only gonna charge us, like sixteen hundred, yeah, sixteen hundred for labor, and then the material cost you can see is printed here, the McCoy's building supply, for twenty-one ninety-seven. Prices do change though, that's why I added in the ten percent. And he, he's willing to get on it. So, any comments?
So, uh, mostly I don't know, I met Tara and Mike over there today just to look at it. Uh, I'm, I'm for closing that in and, and getting this project wrapped up. But some things I saw today and pointed out to Tara, I think, need to be addressed first. Uh, the, the buildings, the back building's not attached. Uh, from my, uh, I hate to call it expertise, but my twenty-two years in construction, it doesn't meet any standards that, that I would say a normal contractor would do. So I don't think it's much, I think there needs to be some lag bolts that pull those two buildings back together. I think the damage occurred in the move. But that being said, I wanna do this, but I think we need him to re-quote, or somebody to re-quote what it looks like to lag those two buildings back together, to make them structurally sound.
When you're saying two buildings, you mean?
The square in the back, yeah. It, it's, it's pulled away about an inch and a half at the top.
So the framer who built on that area did attach it to the building originally. And so in the move, there was a little bit of a separation. So the building, I guess on the floor is level, but to bring the other side, of course, the, you know, you have settling over time, but we've had certainly a lot of rain, but I don't know that, I mean, the painter said he could deal with it, we actually have had a carpenter in there to look at it, and he did shore up quite a bit of it, but I think that this, you know, that, how long do you think that that would take, Terry?
I don't know, because that whole header, it doesn't have a nail attaching that header to the, to the structure. So all those nails would have to be sawzalled out, and then to the point that I, I made when, when I was out there, I don't think it would take much leveling, but some leveling, and then a lag bolt of some sort. There's, there's zero nails attaching that header to the existing building. So like I said, I don't take, I don't think it'll take a lot, but I think that needs to be completed before we add on that other building. To, to my point with Tom earlier, is if we don't have that attached, what, what do we build off of? Do we build off level? Do we build off the existing parallel beams that are going downhill? What do you build off of? So I think we have to get those, and, and, and I don't think it would cost much.
So you're in construction, so is there, um?
I don't do wood construction, I'm just telling you that that's not attached.
Well, yeah, I think it's, if I had to guess, Tara, I'd say it's hundreds of dollars additional to his quote, because he's, all he's gotta do is put a jack under the end of the.
So he is a framer, so he can take care of this.
He should be able to fix it.
It shouldn't be a big deal, it's just, it's attached at the bottom, I think it's just acting like a hinge, because the.
That's right.
End of that little appendage is a little low, so if you cut those nails up top and then jack it up.
Well, actually, Mike, that was kinda what the guy was doing when they moved it. It was separated by more than just an inch or two, it was several inches.
Right.
And so we asked him, I think Kevin was out there too, we asked him to jack it up in the back to close that gap, which he did, but he didn't get it totally closed.
And it's probably because of those nails, so now that they've been removed, you have four fingers on every stud that's preventing it from being. So I think if those, those nails are removed, we get a forty-ton jack out there and jack it up. I don't, I don't think it's ever gonna be back to perfect, to Mike's point today, it is an old building, but we have to have that.
Yeah, you just, you just want it bolted together, you just don't want it hanging together by trim, so.
Put some lag bolts to tighten it.
I think lag bolts or carriage bolts or.
Yeah, that, that don't make sense to me.
Yeah, because it, it's a hinge right now, it's, it's attached on the bottom and open on the top.
Well, I mean, and of course, the big question is if we got a really, really hot wind, like a tornado or something, well, it could pull apart, we need it solid.
If he could look at it, I'm, I'm for moving forward, but is this a five hundred dollar job or a fifteen hundred dollar job? I don't know.
So should we just approve a cap on what we're willing to spend for it? Because you said it should be done first, right, but we should take care of it.
I feel like it should be done first.
And I tend to agree with Terry, just, I, I think we need to get it done now rather than later.
So, um, we, we have had a lot of rain, I think we do need to close that in as soon as possible so that we don't have any damage to the building. So do we want, I mean, do you all want to say, hey, we have a cap, I think that's a good idea, a cap of some type? And, because I think Mr. Steele is willing to do, he probably would be able to do something like that.
The material cost should be relatively low, lag bolts are not expensive, it's gonna be more of a labor. So if y'all wanna say, we'll cap the labor at an additional five hundred, I don't know that I would tell him that, that was our cap. So if you all want to say, we'll cap the labor at an additional 500, I don't know that I would tell him that that was our cap.
It's on video now.
He's not watching this, I'm sure.
Well, I don't know him, I don't know.
Uh, yes, okay.
Tara, is this John Stewart that does that?
No, it's the framer, Mr. Steele, John Steele. Okay, we have citizen Chad West, a citizen Shelley Smith.
Okay, so when I was out there for the tour the other day, I noticed there's a lot of things that need to be done in there. The drywall needs to be fixed, that big gap, all that sort of stuff. Rather than doing new construction to build the closet, I would recommend that you pull the exterior siding off of that entire section, re-side that cover over the door, and then maybe in a couple of years when we're solvent, then add new construction, because you're going to have to put in, you know, the foundation supports, you're going to have to put in the beams, all of that sort of stuff. So I would just seal it off, definitely seal it off from the weather.
Thank you. Okay, so the quote for labor on this is only sixteen hundred, the materials cost is minimal, I think, to just add the closet, the building does not have a closet, and so the secretary, I am sure, would like to have a place to put paper supplies, we need a place to put chairs, and they fold up chairs for the meetings. So that actually could be some really useful space, and I think this is a phenomenal quote. It is, I was expecting it to be, you know, over 5,000 maybe, and it's less than four.
Not to go debate with Ms. Smith, but isn't that part of our bathroom? Is that addition part of our bathroom? It's not?
No.
Well, I know what we're adding on to, but that back porch, where are you saying finish off?
Where's the door today?
Just that little section where the door is.
Yeah, just kill the door.
Yeah, and that which you can redo, the flashing, it's in that corner.
So you're not saying remove the back section, just over the, I mean, that's an idea.
So, but we have to finish the roof, and so you might as well build on. Because the roof, if you've seen the roof, it is, it needs to be addressed.
Well, if you have to finish the roof, you have to have supports for the weight of the roof too. So that's going to be everything but siding.
Is that roof included in this?
That's my understanding, yes.
Well, you have to finish out the walls too, because you're not going to use treated lumber for the interior of it, so...
He just sent the $1,600.
There wouldn't be much left if you had to do the roof and the floor and the, yeah, and the supports and the siding too, to protect the non-treated lumber.
I guess that's what I'm asking Tara, do we have the quote? I don't have a problem on how people turn them in, but what is our expectation? Because that's going to require a hip roof, as I pointed out to Tara and Mike today, that's going to be a hip roof, so is that...
He's a framer and it's very easy for him, apparently.
Do we have the request for quote? If we don't have the quote, then maybe we can see what the request for quote was and that's what he was responding to.
Oh, I don't...
Yeah, it's...
We just have this, right?
Right, and he said he normally gives a formal, a formal quote, he's been pretty slammed, but he, he gave it sixteen hundred.
Yeah, I just want to know what all were, I mean, I have the materials list, I'll look over it, but I just want to see what the expectation was for, you know, I didn't see that it was including roofing on that, so...
Yeah, I see synthetic felt, rhino roof, but I don't see shingles.
I do know that the shingles that we use to repair the roof, it's not identical, but it's pretty similar. They are the three-tab, and they are available, but we'll have to, yeah, I'm not seeing on here.
Yeah, I don't see, I see what he's got on there as a roll.
But I know they're $34 a box, because we just ordered some. And so I know that, they're thirty-four, and it's sort of, you know, square is what, three boxes, three bundles? And so I think on that, on that, it's going to be about a square and a half. So that's going to be at least five boxes. So it's not hugely significant, but...
Well, I asked you today if it's actively leaking, because I was concerned about the gap. So if it's not actively leaking, or if there's something that we can remedy until, until we can get that exact quote, I would be in favor of maybe having a combined written quote with the cost to reattach the two buildings. Unless, unless there's damage occurring that I don't know about.
Well, we looked in the attic, didn't see any, we looked in, I mean, there's nothing on the floor that we can see.
Well, I guess I would add, if it's less than $500, then we go ahead and prove it.
And it includes the roof?
I'm sorry?
And it includes the roof?
I started in here.
And it includes the roof?
No, we're talking about just what Terry said about bolting it together.
Oh, approve the repair now.
Yeah, get it together so then we can proceed, because even the roof has got that gap. You have to, I think Terry's step is, the first one is to get it bolted together, and then we can start on other things, including the closet and roof.
That's my problem with number six though, Tom's, and I agree with you. But the bolting it together is not what's up for discussion on item number six. If we bundled that in with item number six, then I could see that we could discuss it. But if we're talking about a separate activity, then that's not something we could discuss.
I'm saying, Brian, if we approve the $3,797.
Plus 10%.
Plus $500 if we can get it done for $500, and it's 500 plus that, it's forty.
He's saying we don't need approval to spend $500.
That's what he, yeah, basically.
That's what he's getting at. So if he kept his labor under $500, it could be approved by Tara's position.
Well, but I think my, my expectation would be though, if we proceeded with this, that we would end up with a building that had siding, flashing, roof shingles, right, over that end of the building. I mean, we don't want to spend this money and then find out the roof isn't complete, or the siding isn't, you know, it needs to be, it needs to finish it, you know, it needs to finish out that end of the building, so we need to be comfortable.
He was, of course, he does have the synthetic felt for the roofing, the cap nails for the roofing. And I did talk to him about the shingles, and he said it didn't have it on there because he wasn't sure the color and all that. But I think since it's minimal, I mean, it's, the shingles themselves are not that costly.
Well, it seems to have siding on there, presumably it's something similar to what's on there, but it needs to, you know, all the places where the building joins the main building, it needs to be, you know, flashed and sealed so that it doesn't...
And we did talk at length about the siding, you know, that's available, it's the teardrop siding, it is available at GNS, so it's not even available at McCoys, but he tried to get something comparable.
So I would be willing to move forward with this, with the stipulation, you know, the added on for making sure there's a firm connection, but with the stipulation that it does include the roof.
Right.
And if it doesn't include the roof, then it needs to come back to the council.
Okay.
And it includes the roof with the dollar value represented, or within the $500 additional expenditure?
Within the 500, yeah.
And in my opinion, he's got another $167.51 in leeway because he has tax figured on this.
Right, I did tell him that we're tax exempt, of course, I did finally set up a tax exempt account with McCoys because of the roofing shingles that we had to buy, so we have that now, so he didn't have that at the time, but, yeah.
Okay, the only other thing I want to bring up with him fixing the other roof, at that time, it needs to be counterflashed. So that, I mean, it's almost like a whole nother worksheet. When he pulls those together, that siding needs to be removed off of, if we want to call it the big building. Counterflashing needs to go under it, you pull the two buildings together, and then you lay the roofing over the top of it. So just the simple fact of squishing them back together and putting a bolt in it, it solves the attachment portion, but the counterflashes is still an issue on that at that point. So if he can include all that, I don't have a problem. But how are we going to know?
Yeah, I don't expect him to re-roof the building, but he needs to integrate the end of the building and the new stuff into the existing in a way that makes it watertight, I mean, that's not unreasonable. Now, I don't know if that's what he's contemplated in his bid, but I think it should be an expectation of ours for whoever does it.
And to my point, if it's not causing damage right now, I get it, it's covered with a tarp. But if we could meet again and discuss a full written quote, I think it gives us something to hold our labor contractor to. I mean, I do bids every day and I spell things out, and that's for my protection, but it's for their protection too. That expectations are clearly defined, and that my expectations of what I'm doing is clearly defined. So I would rather see something in writing to support, to support this, because I'm for it, I just want to see what we're paying for.
Okay, so, and you want to maybe have a special meeting if we need to address this?
Well, if we're not causing damage, is there a need for a special meeting? If we're not leaking, like I asked today, and I've seen no evidence of, but is there a need? Anybody?
I would say no.
No, if it's not leaking, we should be good.
Well, seeing how Kevin and I put the tarp up, well, I'd feel embarrassed if it was leaking.
Well, how well do you feel like you did? Will it last another thirty days?
For a non-perfessional, you get what you pay for.
Tom warranty.
Okay, so it looks like we'll go back to this fellow, Mr. Steele, ask him about...
I'd be glad to speak with him, with you.
Attending, yeah, that would be good, since you are familiar with the, you know, what needs to happen, the forty-ton jack, the carriage bolt, lag bolt, and then get some sort of the counterflashing, integrated roof, some more detail to what we're actually expecting of him.
Yes.
So, okay.
And if all that can come in at $4,297?
Yeah, well, I don't know about that. We'll see, we'll see what he says.
I'm just saying, if it can, if it comes in $4,297, this is the approval for that. So do you want to just bring it back to the next meeting?
I want to, I want the, I would like the council to see what we're buying. That's just me personally, you can make a motion.
I just have some trust in you, that you...
I'm not asking you to trust me.
Doing a good negotiation for us.
Well...
Okay, so do officially park this tarp, do we want to make a motion to table it?
Until April 2017.
And then it comes back next month, that way it's kind of parked?
I don't have a problem putting it on the forum, after me and Tara. Speak with him too.
Yeah, that's an idea, we could do that.
Yeah, I think that'd be a great idea.
Once we speak with him and then...
That way the citizens can see what our genuine thoughts are and us.
Yeah.
Yes.
That sounds like a plan.
But we need to do something, we can either just abandon this and move to seven, or we can table it.
Well, it's about the same, I think, not taking action. Or the action is that we're going to pursue further written expectations and more of like a spec sheet.
So we'll take no action on this item?
We're going to, well, the action is that we're going to pursue, and Mr. Steele may not even want to do that, I don't know. He may not want to do the lag bolt, carriage bolt transaction, I don't know.
What's your advice, Jenna, what do we do with it? Kind of like it never happened?
You can either take no action or table it to the, to the next meeting, if you're going to address it at the next meeting.
Yeah, I would prefer we table it with the understanding that we're going to go gather more information for a better quote and then revisit it at the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Table the idea, because if we table the agenda item, it still has the same numbers attached to it.
You can revise.
You can.
The numbers, yeah, it doesn't mean it's the same number, but, yeah. It just, we'll see it again.
Right, then I make the motion that we table this item to the next meeting.
Okay.
Second.
All right, I have a motion to, by Vincent, second by White, to table this till next meeting, all those in favor?
By Jaffe.
Oh, second by Jaffe.
We look a lot alike, that was me.
Sorry, it's hard to hear.
Okay, who made the motion?
Okay.
Brian.
And then Mr. Jaffe, second, okay. All right, moving on. Oh, all those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Okay, number seven. Consider and take action on purchasing a town lock to bulletin board from item 5,100 in our chart of accounts called Office Supplies. So Jenna's informing that, you know, all these documents that we put on the town hall are legal documents, so we already knew that, but they've been getting blown in the wind, and we're needing to have something that is more, some of them I found in the water, on the ground, and we need to have something that is, encloses them and keeps them from getting exposed to the elements. So in looking at, there's just all over the place, there's this one, it's an outdoor bulletin, double enclosed. Looking at that, it's standalone, so it would need to be concreted into the ground. That one with shipping, with, it does have lights, top lighting is $150, the two posts are $350. It is, it comes in all different colors. That one, the total's at $1,472.44, and that's the high end. And then there's one that is outdoor enclosed, bulletin board, shadow resistant lock, and that one was also locking. And this one is $456, but of course, it would have to be attached to the side of a building. So I think each has its own advantages. If you have a standalone and someone could drive up and they could just see it right there, it'd be convenient for someone just passing by. But it is pricey for our budget. And then this one that has to be attached to a building, I could see where the advantage would be if we, once we have the AD ramp, someone can walk up and with the, perhaps with the new closet area, it could be attached right there, since we're having to redo the siding anyway. So this one saves a lot of money here, it's only $450. Now, that doesn't include the shipping, I'm sure shipping, free, that may be...
The $456 is free delivery.
Oh, it's Amazon Prime, that's why, okay. All right, and so that's $456. And then I did look at Craigslist and there was one for 400, but it's a lot bigger, I don't know that we need all that. But that was 400 for a pre-owned one. So just some different choices? Any comments?
Yeah, I'm in favor of the bulletin board, I think it's a necessity. What I was wondering is, we have a lot of good craftsmen here in Poetry, I was wondering if somebody here could build one for us? You know, as part of the civic pride.
Whether possibly build something to accommodate like this $456 one, right? Just a little, couple of posts, and you can make a little roof or something, we've got some cabinet makers.
Because I preferred the freestanding, except I didn't like the extra $1,000.
Right.
So, I just thought maybe it'd be something the community might be interested in helping support.
We do have quite a few carpenters in the area, so if we were able to purchase this double, it is a, it's a dual-door, outdoor enclosed, shadow resistant with locks, you know, it does have, you can have, I think the frame, well, it's, it can be, I think the frame can be changed on that one, I'm not certain. The other one, it looks like the frame can be multiple option finishes, it can be white, that white would match the building, probably.
It's aluminum frame only.
This one is aluminum only, so...
The background can be changed.
The background is black or tan or gray or cream colored, yeah. So, but yeah, no, that was a thought I had as well. There might be a craftsman who wouldn't mind maybe even using something similar to that design to put the post in the ground, because it would be convenient for folks to just drive up, rather than have to park their car, get out, and go look at, you know.
With my eyes, I'm still going to have to park and go look at it.
Now, for the city secretary who's having to post all these, I don't know, which do you think would be more convenient, Ms. Jenna?
Oh, it doesn't matter, I need exercise, so...
So, your thoughts?
Just to have one would be nice, like I said, chasing them around the yard, that's not good.
Yes.
Yeah, I would, I would move Tara that we consider the less expensive one, and if we temporarily screw it to the building, or even screw it to the pipe fence, until we can talk somebody into building us a little decorative thing, that would be fine. It could be functioning right now, maybe not in its final form, but at least it's locked and waterproof.
Yeah, I'd like to see it attached to the fence myself.
So the outside of the fence is not ours?
You don't want somebody driving around hitting it, might have to turn it off.
The inside is ours?
The street-facing side is ours, so...
No, the street-facing side would be, of course, that'd be difficult for Jenna to...
It'd be difficult to read if it's muddy ditch.
Yeah, they'd have to go through the ditch to read it. So I don't know that that would be ideal. And of course, the Mr. Whitfield who's volunteering his time to do the welding has not quite finished that section of the fence. It's coming along though nicely, but...
Well, just, there's a question. It looks to me like one of the cheaper ones could put some four-by-four posts... put some four by four posts in and seam it in and then attach it to that out by the road.
Out by the road or out by the-
We accept your offer, Tom.
He did build the steps, so.
He's got momentum.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I like Mike's idea of getting the, the lesser expensive one, hopefully we can upgrade it with some local craftsmanship.
Okay.
Okay, so we-
Yeah, that's under the five hundred dollar mark.
Yeah, so I make a motion-
We do, we have Shelley Smith.
I make a motion, we go for the four hundred and fifty-six dollar one, but I guess we've gotta allow some room.
We got a citizen.
Oh, do we?
Yes, we have one citizen. Did that hurt talk?
I've never figured out why you're not posting them on the inside of the windows facing out.
The way the law reads, that we have to post on the outside of-
Kinda high, I don't know if you-
They would, you would see them from the outside of the building. Okay, or you could cut a piece of corkboard the same size as the window, put all your stuff on the corkboard, set it up in the window, it's secure, it's waterproof, it's not blowing away, it's not gonna cost more than five bucks, and it's a temporary solution until we get solvent. I know, it sounds too easy, doesn't it?
I'd have to reread the ordinance to make sure that we can post it inside, even if it is facing out. As I recall the ordinance as well, it has to be posted on the exterior of the building.
Well, yeah, it would be in, in the window facing out. What's the difference between the, the, the window box thing that you're gonna buy and stick in concrete?
With the litigious society that we live in, their exterior versus interior, I, it makes a difference.
Well, there you go, there you go, just throwing that out there, I mean, even if it's just for next month, but, yeah, I'm tired of watching them blow away, so.
Yep, that's a creative idea, thank you, Shelley. Um, yeah, the way the, the ordinance reads for that is that it does have to be exterior and it's supposed to be on a bulletin board.
Well, I know that the window is not real high, so it's, it would be easier for the to-
You know, I'm really glad we got that opinion, but I thought we were under legal advice not to have a conversation.
I'm sorry.
The commentaries.
The second rules.
Well, we, I think we were offered that, we weren't told we couldn't.
So, I mean, I think the, the, to that point is, if it's on topic, it's acceptable, we just can't go off, off into the gutter, but, yeah. All right, so, um, I, I wanna hear from our citizens, I think they have valid points and she's an artist and very talented and comes up with some good ideas, so. All right, so, um- Anybody have a motion?
I tried.
Oh, second.
Okay, so, what's your motion?
Yeah, there was a motion on the table.
Okay, yeah, I apologize to Shelley, I wasn't, I forgot about the public piece, but yeah, I would move that we purchased the four hundred and fifty-six dollar one. My only concern is we wanna make sure we allow for, I don't know if we have an account that we can put it on to get the free shipping or if you're gonna have to pay shipping, but-
Um, so I do have an Amazon Prime account, finally. I've held out-
So, it's gonna have four fifty-six plus tax, so whatever that is.
Well, it won't have tax, cause we're, um, I have ordered, um, supplies, um, for the town, um, on my, and I was able to submit the tax exempt, I think, the tax exempt status, I was, I think, yeah. So, um, I'd have to submit it again for each purchase, so I'm, I think I can get that, I am not gonna-
I'd like to include a dollar amount, just so we don't end up with a ten thousand dollar bulletin.
Well, it's, it's under the five hundred dollar anymore, anyway, so.
And so, are you moving even without the, making the motion without?
The intent of my motion is that we go buy the Gant four hundred and fifty-six dollar and fifty-two cent bulletin board, whatever that ends up costing.
Okay, with whatever that involves, yeah.
Just in case we have to pay tax.
Okay.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Jaffe, seconded by Councilmember White, to accept the Gant thirty-six by forty-eight inch, two-door enclosed bulletin board, shatter resistant with lock satin aluminum frame, and did you, you guys didn't specify a color? Do you care what the background color is?
And it is waterproof, I presume.
It, it is-
And shatter resistant.
Shatter resistant, enclosed.
Not bulletproof.
This is outdoor.
Um, so-
And this is outdoor enclosed.
And that's seconded by Councilmember White, um, is there a preference on the color, since we're here? We have, there's a black, there's a cream, there's a gray, and there's a off-white, it looks like, or a tan, ebony, cream or gray.
I mean, black gives you the best contrast for white sheets of paper, I don't know.
The fence is black. All right, uh, any preference on that?
I'm rather utilitarian, so no.
Okay, the fence is black, the building is white, um-
I mean, I think the color is of the little felt part, it's not the frame, it looks like the frame is-
Right, it's the background color, I think black would be fine.
That way they can see if there's something actually there, if it's white, they may not know if there's even anything there.
That's true, that's true.
Plus it'll get dirty.
Okay, is there a-
Need a boat.
Okay, so all those in favor of accepting this, um, motion?
The four hundred and fifty-six one?
Four hundred and fifty-six dollar Gant thirty-six by forty-eight inch, two-door outdoor enclosed bulletin board, shatter resistant, locking satin aluminum frame in ebony, all those in favor?
Yep.
And that passes four to one, okay?
Who's opposed to?
And that's Vincent opposed.
Who was in the?
Me.
Just knew we had you sold on that.
I, I think Shelley made a valid point, I'd like to look up the, the, um, ordinance before I vote it's up.
Yeah.
Well, we can delay that purchase and you can come back and be a hero and tell us who your next vendor is.
Well, it's already passed. Yeah, it's already passed. Okay, number eight, moving on, discuss and take action on amending budget to take funds from three thousand, use prior year excess into the sixty-one hundred road repair and the sixty-three hundred election expense accounts. So, one of the reasons we have the actual versus budget is to see where we track, and so, um, we are seven point two percent over on the road repairs, um, I'm glad that we're spending money on our roads. So, we have allotted in our budget sixteen thousand and sixty dollars for road and repair, we've spent seventeen thousand two hundred and twenty dollars, and we, um, have in our use of prior year excess, the twenty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety-seven, so in order to repair for the next, um, six months roughly, we probably need to transfer some of that from-
So, you said-
-one category to the roads. And then sixty-three hundred, the election expense, um, Hunt County was quite a bit over, our total amount between the two counties was sixty-three thirteen fifty-eight, and our budgeted amount is ten thousand, so we can only surmise that the May election will cost roughly about the same. So, if that's the case, then, and it, it does vary some between, um, what, which entities are participating, and so, um, if it is dub- it is the same amount, then that would be a total of twelve thousand six hundred and twenty-seven dollars on the election expense, and so, just so we have a number there. So, let's go ahead and discuss the roads first, um, we're seven point two percent over and we have, do you all want to?
We're seven point two percent over, does that include the, what Kaufman just did?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, even though that, what they did is not what I recall we asking them to do?
So, on Green Meadow Road, they did what we asked them, on the three other roads, they used the Duramax machine that was my, primarily, um, an oil sand mixture mixed with like a gravel, and so it wasn't what we specified. Um, I did talk to Aaron Conway about that, he said they were short-staffed and, um, I didn't try to belabor the point, but I did let him know that we were aware that, that it wasn't what we had specified.
So, we paid full price first?
We did, and so, um, we do actually have, um, in the Kaufman County account, last time when we had the meeting, Tom, they had said we had an escrow of like three thousand. And I think part of that, um, was they didn't itemize some of, somewhere, but I don't know if that still exists, but that's what they had said.
So, the comp patroller money for sales and use is gonna kick in at some point, do we have an estimate for that, cause that's gonna change how much we allot for road and repair and maintenance, in my mind.
So, we budgeted fifteen thousand for that, we will probably not see a dime of that until June. And I did get a notice as a business owner that, um, we have to start collecting April first, so then, for those who are monthly filers, um, such as the feed store, then we would file that, um, in June, and then the town would receive some funds in, um, let's see, April, May, excuse me, May, and then we would receive funds in June, is what the comp patroller told me. And then there's other businesses, of course, that are only quarterly filers, and so then we wouldn't see that for four months.
I would personally like to see the, uh, the rainy day fund grow, um, I mean, the, the roads are important, um, incredibly important, and we, we are incurring election expenses, but, um, I, I think that we could probably find that money elsewhere, including, um, potentially the property tax, but I'd, I'd like to see-
Property tax.
Uh, uh, excuse me, the-
Sales and use.
Sales and use tax.
Those are fight wars.
I'm not running again, taking home the first one.
Not now that you said tax, you are.
The, the, the sales tax, so, um, yeah, I, I would just like to, to see the, the town have a little bit in its coffers.
So, how much, just restating maybe for me, cause maybe I'm the one missing here, how much money are you looking for, Tara, to put into the road fund?
Well, if we track with what we've currently spent, now granted, I think we were a little bit behind the curve, I, I'm looking at maybe ten thousand for now.
Eight to ten thousand?
About ten thousand is what I was thinking, um-
If you use simple twelve-month smoothing, which a lot of times, uh, you, you'll see a longer, uh, timeframe on smoothing, but if we just take that in about, about five months and then reapply it to the, the whole year, we're gonna be two hundred and fifty-seven percent of budget, at a total of forty-one three twenty-eight. So, my question is, what, what, what did we miss to make us spend seventeen thousand dollars and did we have some catastrophe that, that I'm unaware of, or, cause we, I mean, admittedly, we missed that one bad. So, I don't, I don't see where ten thousand fixes it unless we're gonna slow down our road repairs.
Well, the volunteer, um, group did eight thousand potholes or something, so they did quite a bit and it was, you know, donated funds, so when we, after we got the inner local agreements, then, you know, this is really our first year of actually doing the project sheet, so it's, it's really anybody's guess how much we were spending. So, this is, um, you know, it looks like it's gonna be, if we budgeted sixteen, or we've spent seventeen, so it could be, you know, thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars a year that we might spend on pothole repair. So, and I'm, now that we only have used, um, and our legal fees have gone down, I think that now, in order to switch it from a chart of accounts such as legal fees to, to pothole repair, that takes an ordinance, to do it from this use of prior year excess, my understanding is, much of talking with Jenna, is that we can do that without an ordinance, but your budget, you, you can't really move other items around, to, to your point, without an ordinance.
Which is why I also wouldn't wanna move too much over, because that sales and use tax is gonna come in eventually, and most notably, that's gonna be earmarked specifically for roads, we can't use it for anything else, so we just don't wanna tie up too much money in this, I would think.
Exactly what I was thinking.
Well, we, we don't have to put ten thousand in there, we can put three thousand or five thousand, I mean, we can do this more than once.
Well, that's, that could also, you know, I'm just thinking of saving agenda items, but if, but yes, if you, um-
Well, just as we get greater visi- the further we go along, the more visibility we have, so I think-
So, the Hunt County typically, you know, it's thirty-five hundred to six thousand, so I think, if for one project sheet, in order to cover one project sheet, I think we should at least have, you know, at least six thousand. So that we don't have to keep coming back to council, that we can, you know, we'll, we'll definitely approve a, a project sheet, but that way we don't have to move that at that time. But it's what, what, whatever you wanna do.
Yeah, I think to Terry's question, that the thing that comes to my mind is, so if we're burning about three thousand a month fixing holes, but I think there's a diminishing return there, where the roads are gonna require more than just a little bit, right, I think they're gonna, patching isn't gonna maintain status quo, patching is just gonna cause the degradation to slow down a little bit.
Well, like my, uh, the road that we paid for in twenty years ago has never been redone, twenty-four hundred has never been redone. So, um, and I currently have requested the records from both counties on the history of the inception of that road and when they were totally refurbished and they are scrambling. So, because in order to budget properly, I feel like we need that. So, when I go and look at the roads regularly, um, the roads I see are the worst, that are in our jurisdiction and not private roads, um, you know, um, of course, we're, I don't wanna get too far off topic, but I see that there are, you know, gate lane, four-post lane are probably the, two of the worst, and that's half a mile. And then, of course, twenty-four fifty-eight, um, needs total refurbish, refurbishment, um, and that is two miles. So, we have two and a half miles right now that are needing, needing total, but that's not on this topic, so we're gonna, let's focus on this one.
Well, just to, to figure out how much money we think we need to run out the end of the budget year, I think we need to probably expect to spend something around three thousand a month from now on, right, so that would be the next six months. So, ten, tens probably, unless we fail to repair roads, ten probably ain't gonna get us all the way to the end, if we've already burned sixteen in the first six months, I think part of what Terry was saying.
Which county is it that switches back and forth between road maintenance and some other functions on their, their crews? They do road maintenance during the winter or something else?
Well, both of them, they, in the winter, they typically do tre- tree trimming and, you know, shredding and all that, um, but that's also partnered with the electric company utilities, so.
I was just thinking, if they're not going to be able to do it, that, that this is their season for, for coming up to do it, so.
Yeah, it may not get us through, I'm hoping, we should see some money in June, so we only, I hope, we only have to get until then around, I mean, we really have no idea what that sales and use is gonna look like, so I hate to put too much money in there and then it end up being more than we expected for sales and use. Not that that's the most likely scenario, but, you know, we don't wanna put too much in, because then it's just harder to get out than just putting a little more in from our excess fund.
Do you wanna try nine thousand, so to get a spot for three months, potentially?
Nine thousand for the roads only.
For the roads, mm-hmm.
Yeah, I guess I, I would add that the election, we don't get our bill for the election for weeks or months after the election, so-
Depends on the county, yeah.
Right?
Well, I will say this, we've already now, we've already prepaid for the Kaufman portion, and that was, I think we owe, actually, I, I think that's it, we've already prepaid for the Kaufman County portion of the election, it's just the Hunt County portion that we have not paid, they haven't given us a bill yet. And the Kaufman, or the, excuse me, the Hunt County, or Kaufman County portion was five hundred and seventy-five dollars, I believe.
So, I guess, I guess getting, coming around to it, I'd prefer just to put the money in the roads now, that's immediate. The election is, um, a little bit unknown, and-
Yeah.
-to carry us over until we start getting a sales and use tax, and hopefully it's substantial, but, yeah, we don't know. So, we really, and you'd said June, we're supposed to get money in June, you think?
Mm-hmm, that's what the comp patroller has said.
Okay, well, that, that could be the end of June, so it could still be three months or four months away, rather. So, I guess I would say, don't worry about the election budget right now, let's worry about the, uh, roads, that's, I think everybody in the town is, uh, got that complaint.
Well, but we wanna be mindful of keeping the town solvent, I mean, we don't have a lot of headroom, we're letting our account get pretty, you know, tens of thousands of dollars, there's not a lot of money for a town for margin, so.
Right, I'm just saying, I, I wouldn't worry about the election right now, I'd worry about the roads.
So, on your point, Tom?
I'm sorry?
So, backing out of the five hundred and seventy-five, that's already prepaid, um, as far as I know, we won't have another bill from, um, Kaufman County, that leaves- That leaves fifty-seven, thirty-eight potentially for Hunt County. So if we have thirty-six, eighty-six, then that kind of gives us a ballpark to go from. So, you know, if we put maybe twenty-one hundred dollars in the election account, then that could possibly carry us, and we wouldn't be over in that category.
And the way our government's set up, we'll have to vote to pay that bill, right?
Yes.
So, to, I guess, sum to Tom's point, if we wait on the bill that same night, could we not move that from account number three thousand to account number sixty-three hundred and nail it to the penny and be done with that budget line?
Exactly, so we could, we just have to make sure it's on, on the agenda.
Jana, I happened to look over when he was asking that question, and based on the facial expression, it didn't sound like that was a great idea. So would you like to help us out?
Well, on your budget amendments, you want to try to keep them all together. And at the same time, when you start showing budget amendments on the agenda often.
The auditors don't like it, do they? Yeah, the auditors don't like it.
So if you're going to amend, you need to do it all in one shot.
Okay, with that being said, we should get a bill next month for the estimated cost of the election, correct? Or no?
No, we don't know, we don't.
It's afterwards?
Hunt County, oh my, they waited five months, I think, on the last.
Okay, well, with that being said, when do we think we're going to, I mean, is there a projection on the next time we're going to spend money on the roads?
Well, it's raining.
Yes.
So, I mean, I'm constantly perusing the roads, and they can happen overnight, it seems, like.
Well, to Jana's point, I hate to put twenty-one hundred in there, we need twenty-two hundred. That's another budget amendment. So, either way, I mean, we have to move the money, but.
Do you have, Jana, do you have a suggestion?
Yeah, I would go over a little bit on your adjustment, that way you're not cutting it too close.
Okay.
Okay, so can somebody restate where we are in the proposal here? We're going to take how much money from where and put it where?
So, we can potentially take nine or ten thousand dollars out of use of prior year excess, item chart of account number three thousand, and place it into road repair and maintenance so that we can cover until we know more definitively what our sales and use tax revenue is. And then, secondly, address the twenty-one hundred or maybe twenty-two hundred dollars or whatever number is safe to go with. A little bit over would be better, probably. Into the, from, from that same three thousand account into the elections expense account.
Sixty-three hundred.
Into item sixty-three hundred, yes.
The first twelve hundred dollars we put into sixty-one hundred just makes us whole on our budget, right? Brings us back to even. And then the balance of that will give us something we can work off of for additional road repair.
Correct.
Can you say it again, Terry? I'm sorry, Mike, I couldn't hear you. What you just said.
Me? Well, I was just saying that we're, right now, in sixty-one hundred road repair and maintenance, we're eleven-hundred-and-sixty dollars deficient to our budget.
Yeah.
So if we resupply that with nine or ten thousand dollars, in my mind at least, I'm not an accounting major, but I would, I would take out of that nine or ten thousand dollars, the eleven-sixty, to bring us back to zero on the budget. And then the balance of seven thousand, whatever, would be what we'd have available. So if we move ten, we can't spend ten, would be.
We would, that would leave us with eighty-eight-hundred-and-forty dollars to spend.
Yeah. And if we happen to win on the sales tax revenue, I mean, I, certainly that money should be able to carry over. It just can only be allocated to road repair, because we need to start building up money in those accounts, because we're looking at, you know, hundreds of thousands and millions of dollars worth of road rebuilding. When we get there, we're a long ways from building out.
So I, so the, I am working on a grant for that. But, so, the use of prior year excess, I believe, needs to be used up anyway. From what, isn't that what you said, Jana, or am I misstating that?
No, no, your prior excess you can use in the year as long as you're budgeting to do so.
Okay.
So you're amending your budget right now to use those funds.
A portion of those funds.
Right, as you'll specify.
But do we have to burn that to zero by the end of the fiscal year?
No, you don't have to burn it to zero.
Okay. So that's our slush fund.
Don't like the term there.
All right, so, is there a motion? Okay, all right. We've got Citizen Chad West. All right, so, so eighty-eight forty for, and if we don't want to come back to the table for very long, you know, is that going to last us? If we put in ten thousand dollars from the use of prior year excess account three thousand into the sixty-one hundred roads repair, that would only leave us eighty-eight forty to actually spend on the roads between now and. Well, this is our budget, so we, once we start getting funded from the fifteen thousand on sales and use, then we could put that into there as well. But we won't get sales and use until June, so here it is, you know, end of March. We'll have April, May, it could maybe work, I think it could work.
So you said we're moving ten thousand from account three thousand to sixty-one hundred?
So that is the suggestion. If we move ten thousand from three, use of prior year excess funds into the sixty-one hundred road repair and maintenance fund, that would leave us eighty-eight forty to spend, because you're subtracting the deficit there of eleven-sixty. That would leave us eighty-eight forty between, you know, the next couple of months until we know what the June revenue is.
Well, with the advice of Jana, that we don't want to do this monthly.
No, but, you know, usually amend your budget twice a year, right around the springtime, like you're doing now. And then usually, right before you approve your budget, you'll have budget amendments before the new year starts.
And move how much to account sixty-three hundred?
So into the elections account, I think, I would feel a little more comfortable if we at least moved to twenty-three hundred, because we don't know.
Twenty-three hundred?
Let's call it twenty-three ninety-seven sixty-seven. Then that gives us a solid number on our line three thousand. I mean, we don't know, what's the difference?
We don't know.
It could be five thousand dollars off, we don't know. Luckily for us, it should be the least expensive election we pay for, because more people, everybody will participate in this election.
That's right, yeah, we're sharing it with a lot of people.
That's right. So I think your numbers should be safe, but to that point, I don't want to move money again. So call it twenty-four hundred dollars.
I'm going to try twenty-four hundred. Okay, so we have a motion, I believe. Okay, I move that we move money from item three thousand, use of prior year excess, of ten thousand dollars to the sixty-one hundred road repair and maintenance, and additionally, move twenty-four hundred dollars into the election expense account, item sixty-three hundred. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, that's, motion's been made by myself and seconded by Anderson. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously.
Tara.
Yes, sir.
Can we have a break?
Okay, the time is eight oh nine, and we'll take a five-minute break. Okay, the time is now eight nineteen. We'll go ahead and resume our meeting after our break. Okay, so resuming our meeting to number nine. Owing to unforeseen circumstances, Secretary Janice Shelton would like to work more from home to have flexibility to assist her daughter. This, we're going to discuss and take action, amending official hours from Wednesday, twelve to four P.M. to Thursday, twelve to four P.M., when the Deputy Secretary Teresa Scholander will be working in the office. And I did discuss that option with Teresa, she was perfectly fine with it, she's there anyway. And she said on Thursdays, and that seems to be working well for her. Any discussion?
Sounds good to me.
It says work from home more, does that indicate that we, that you've been working from home at this point?
Uh, yes, I started Monday, and I've been answering emails from home and doing some things from home.
Okay, that's working out well for you?
Yes.
Well, I think at this point, Jana, you can say whatever you want.
Well, I really wasn't planning on this, but I'm going to be babysitting for a little bit, so.
Okay. Now, since it says more but not exclusively, do you anticipate having any time in the office? Or is it going to be full work from home?
Yes, I will come in and do filing, necessary filing and things like that on a Wednesday, so.
Tara, we never, this is tangential to this agenda item, but we never really finished the conversation on ten ninety-nine versus full-time. Does any of this change any of that?
We can't really talk about that tonight, but, so, actually, since she's working from home using her own equipment, it actually would give more validity to the ten ninety-nine, but that's off-topic, I'm sorry.
No, I understand, I'm just wondering if, I don't want to violate whatever we're supposed to be doing by doing this, so.
No, 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 actually, it gives more validity. If she's working on her own equipment from home, then that would be more in the line with the ten ninety-nine. But answer your question on that.
I guess I'd make a motion, we accept it.
Okay, let me see if there's. There is no public comment, or citizen comments on that one. Zero, very sparse.
So will this come with notification? I guess public notification that our official town hours have changed.
I believe it's posted on our website, so we can certainly change that on our website. And then we can certainly change that, like put it in the post, or.
With concerns for Ms. Scholander's health, what does plan B if she has unforeseen medical leave?
Well, just like she, if she had something come up, and I have to cover.
Okay.
I'm usually there anyway, because we're working together on financials, so. She's doing well, I mean, just for that little stretch, you know, like having to have the whole stress of the town on her shoulders was not working for her. But doing just the accounting and she's doing a few other things, and we have a board, we're dividing tasks. And I think that's working.
You know, I can't speak for the citizens, Tara, but I'll speak for me in saying that I have found Jana to be very available in terms of responding to emails and other things. And I never really pay attention to whether it's the right hours that she's supposed to be answering. But for my purposes at least, she gets back very quickly, and I appreciate that a lot. You know, if we have a question or need something, so. But again, I can't speak for the citizens, I don't know if people are walking up the locked doors or unavailable. But for me, she has been a real godsend.
Amen.
Thank you.
Okay, since there's no citizen comment on this one, do we have a motion? Okay, and was there a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by Anderson.
You can't second it on a motion. Make your motion again.
Make your motion again, and then we'll.
Make a motion, we accept the new hours for Janice Shelton and also Teresa Scholander.
For the office hours to switch from Wednesday, twelve to four, to Thursday, twelve to four. So just switching days. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Anderson, seconded by Councilmember Vincent, to accept the change, allowing Secretary Janice more flexibility to work from home, and then also switching our office hours, official office hours for the town hall from Wednesday, twelve to four, to Thursday's, twelve to four. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Okay, number ten. Consider and take action on proposed town scholarship for student, or students interested in studying in agriculture, horticultural, animal science, or veterinary-related fields. So I worked on, just based on what we'd kind of discussed last time. This is just a one-page, but of course, it's asking for additional items to be provided. So on this form, it just says, application, date received. Applications must be received between April first and May first of each year. Contact at poetrytextastart.org. The objective, the town of Poetry, an effort to encourage future agriculture-related endeavors, will provide an annual scholarship opportunity. Now, I put a thousand dollars, it didn't have to be that, that was just a suggestion for student slash students who reside in the town of Poetry wanting to study or currently studying agriculture, agricultural business, agricultural economics, agricultural marketing, aquaculture, animal science, poultry science, entomology, or veterinary medicine. The scholarship winner, winners will be presented each June. And then it just says, who, current students or prospective students with valid proof of approval from a university or community colleges, ages seventeen to seventy. And then work experience should be listed. Key strengths, GPA of three-point-oh and above, include certified transcript. Hobbies can be listed, and then asking for a three-hundred-to-five-hundred-word essay. Attach a typed essay of why you want to study your, it should say field, field, and then how it can benefit a rural way of life, and attach three references. So any of this can be amended, it was just my stab at it.
So I think it's a great stab. I want to be more inclusive. It says university or college, that's pretty formal. I want any school, vocational, trade school, anything like that. I think our objective line might be a little micro-focused as opposed to macro-focused, because, I mean, you can list anything, swine science, horticulture, ag, communication. So I think, I feel that will contribute to the continuation of agriculture or something to that effect. I don't want to, I don't want to put ourselves in a box on certain amount of items, so we can work on the wording. But that was my, oh, and the age, I'd like to keep it seventeen to twenty-two. That's kind of in the wheelhouse of a kid who's needing a hand up. And the only other concern I had is, I mean, I wasn't the greatest student either, but Texas recognizes two-point-oh as good academic standings. I think someone with a higher GPA may yield theirselves to a better chance of getting a scholarship. But I don't want, again, I don't want to, you know, some kids are very task-driven, and some people are very intellectual. But if we got a welding student that wants to build fence for the rest of his life, and he's one of those two-point-oh kids, I mean, I did better than that, but I recognize with that kid, too. So I think lower some of our standards, and then broaden some of our, I guess, our vocational or trade schools. And then the only other thing I want to talk is how we're going to select them. Is it us, and if it is, I don't, is that an executive session? Because I don't want everything being public, or is this a voluntary committee?
That's a lot.
That's a lot, but.
So I, I think, I like the adding a vocational trade school, I think that's good. You're not discriminating against those older students. Because I, I had the pleasure of meeting a girl named Laura Harrison, and she started nursing school at age fifty. And she's now an oncology nurse. She worked for me at the feed store for three and a half years, and now she's an oncology nurse. She was going to school the entire time. And, you know, she started a whole new career at age fifty, and I don't want to discriminate against. And she was a single person, and every dollar mattered to her. And so just because you're not, you're over twenty-two, doesn't mean that you couldn't do something in this. And I think, especially in scholarships, they do kind of discriminate against the older set. And so, a lot of times.
I didn't go back to school until I was in my mid-thirties.
And I get all that, but this point was driven off the, after the reason of, I guess, promoting agriculture in the younger generation, so.
Well, that's what you said.
Well, and that's, that was my thought, when, because this is, this is more from an embroidered shirt to a regional farmer, to possibly a scholarship to support upcoming youth. So that's, that was my thought, is a high school-type scholarship. And I mean, we can do whatever, but that was, that was the original thought, I think.
Well, I think what I hear, when I talk to numerous citizens, a lot of them are later in life, and they're coming to poetry later on in life, and they're like, wow, we have an oasis here. Man, I'd really want to do X, Y, Z. And they want a ranch, and they want a farm, but maybe they don't have a skill set for that. And so I kind of would like to allow a little more wiggle room in that age, I think.
Well, then, let's remove the top end, then.
The, just remove the topic?
The top end. If you're going to, if you're going to put it in a box, let's take seventy out. I don't want to discriminate against a seventy-one-year-old.
So, what, seventeen to seven hundred, or what?
Seven. Seventeen.
Seventeen and up, okay. Is that agreeable to you fellows?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Well, yeah, you can just say someone, yeah, seventeen or above, or minimum age of seventeen. You done, Terry?
Any feelings on lowering the GPA, I mean, every kid, I mean, that's an acceptable, a two point oh is acceptable, actually considered good academic standing in state of Texas.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, you know, being book smart has anything to do with being farming smart, so, yeah, I don't, two is, two is fine.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I'm just kinda going with what the typical is, but this is very unique, so I'm fine with that.
Again, the guy that, you know, I guess, if we're impressed by grade, somebody comes in with a four oh application, maybe they'll win, I don't know, over somebody that has a two oh, but maybe not.
I could tell you that I maintained a three eight six, and there were no scholarships for me.
Well, if you wanna take up a vocational trade.
Um, the other clarification, now added welding in here, I was just trying to be inclusive, to give us some sort of, I mean, if someone is, I wanted to, I mean, I think what we were trying to promote is something to do, they come back home, they come to poetry and they ranch, they farm, they weld, they do, you know, something that is going to promote that in our, in our region, so, did you?
Including but not limited to, maybe?
Okay.
Tara, just as a point of order, are you trying to get this all the way through tonight, or is it something we could throw on the forum and massage and bring back finish next time?
April first is the, if we wanted to do it for this year, then April first is coming up.
But it also has to be funded, and I, and I will volunteer to sponsor some of this, but I'm not willing to do it a thousand, so.
Well, I think we also.
So, there's funding as well.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna see us clarify too, who reside in the Town of Poetry, we've already had that argument over trash and water and elections, where do these people need to live?
Well, I mean, I feel like a perk of living in the Town of Poetry, and those who pay the franchise fees are actually paying for this, and so, I don't think it should be broadened, on this one, I don't.
So, it's the same criteria as the solid waste, if their driveway hits a.
Yes, I think, if they, you know, if, if their family member pays the franchise fees, they should be eligible for this in some manner. I don't think it should be outside of that, though.
I guess I'm wondering why, yeah, I mean, I could, fiscally, I can see that, but I also, we've got a big kinda donut hole in our town layout, and it's where a lot of the farmland is, so.
Yeah, I'm gonna actually side with Mr. Mike on this, I mean, I think maybe we should expand it, not only to give ourselves more opportunity, 'cause I'm not sure how many youth are in our town, I don't think that's our majority demographic, and we wanna make sure to have more than just one application.
Yeah, I mean, I'm wondering why we wouldn't just say town in ETJ, and I don't know if it's funded by the town or if it's donations.
And that affects us too, keeping.
Oh, just all volunteer donations?
And keeping the area around us in the ETJ rural too is going to affect the people in the town.
Absolutely.
I mean, our community extends beyond our town borders.
More of us are ETJ than our town, so, a lot more.
Okay, so, we've got two issues going here, we've got, one is, I think we should start with funding first, probably, so is this going to be funded by our current revenues from our town coffers, or this primarily just from donations?
Yeah, and maybe we just take the amount off now and we solicit donations this time.
And see how much we come up with?
Yeah, it's just a nonspecific scholarship.
Okay, and should we say in there, "From donated funds"?
I would prefer from donated funds.
Okay. Okay, and then the other question, okay, so if it's gonna be from donated funds, and I would concur, that it could be opened up to the ETJ, but you see, if it were going to come from the town coffers, I don't think it would be fair and right to give it to those outside that are not contributing. But, but, so, if you want to have it from donated funds, we could say who reside in the Town of Poetry and the ETJ of poetry. And then, nonspecific on the funds, then, do we want to have more than one student available to receive that? So, say if we did have a thousand dollars and we have two who maybe are worthy of that, do we divide it equally or have the ability to do so?
Look, I think if we get more money, we should consider more scholarships, right?
Okay, so just kinda leave it open.
We should sort of target one a year, but if, if we have particularly generous people in that year, I don't have a problem with awarding more than one, and then we can get two, or whatever the funds would allow.
So, the student slash S could remain and then leave the nonspecific amount, it would be from donated funds. So then, do we advertise, I guess, for that, and say, hey, we have this scholarship, we're wanting to promote agriculture in our area, if you, if you feel so compelled, you can donate to this scholarship amount. We'll be soliciting applications, April first and May first of each year, through May first of each year.
Yeah, we're a little rushed this year, but next year, we have the whole year to raise a thousand dollars or whatever.
Or whatever it is, and maybe it's more.
If we're gonna give one this year, we're in a little bit of a hurry.
Of course, in a non-generous year, that might kinda be sad for some.
That's why I was thinking that if we have an excess, we might wanna carry that over.
Carry it over, yeah.
But is there a reason this first year, we couldn't award this a little bit later and then get back on schedule next year, so that we have a little more time?
Well, I was just going with what Councilmember Fowler said last time, he said, you know, most students need that money in June to prepare for the fall, you know, they don't need it typically later, but, I don't know.
I guess we got a month, a little over a month.
So, who's gonna select them?
It doesn't say on here, so, I think originally we talked about the council and the mayor meeting.
Yeah, I'd like to see the applications go to the council and mayor, we individually consider them, and then we have an executive session where we.
Select.
Fight over who gets to win.
At least for this first time round, I mean, we are the old Russians time round, stand up a citizen committee or anything would be a credit.
Yeah.
Is that a reason to call an executive session?
It would cost us money to do that.
Dennis says no.
To do an executive session?
What are you saying, Ms. Jana?
Executive session has certain criteria to go into executive session, and I don't think that.
Yeah, it doesn't meet it.
But it has to be done in public.
So, two members and.
It would be have two members and the mayor, maybe, 'cause I don't count as quorum. Okay.
Well, I mean, I guess I could argue that none of this has to be managed by the town, right? I mean, this could all be given over to the hands of a committee or a private person or whatever.
My concern is on that, is that, you know, you have elected officials versus volunteers, there could be favoritism, and I think it could go wonky pretty fast.
Yeah. I think this year at least, we should have the two council members plus the mayor, and then, while we have the intervening here, you know, put more structure around it.
Well, if it's two plus one, then you guys can do it in secret, we don't need to have a meeting.
Right.
Right, 'cause it's not a quorum, so.
Right. So, is there, are there any council members who are interested in doing this? Councilmember Fowler, and who else?
Jimmy, why are you pointing at me?
We know you're the best.
Well, no, I'm not, but I, I mean, I'd certainly do it if it needs doing, but.
Okay, so Fowler's definitely a go on this, anyone else?
Do I just make a motion?
Jaffe will volunteer if I need to.
Yeah.
Terry says I'm volunteering.
I'm gonna make a motion with your name in it, and we're gonna take a vote, I'm gonna second that motion.
I'm fine, I mean, I wanna do my part, I don't, I just don't wanna take somebody's spot, but we don't have like a rush to volunteer, so I guess Tom's building stairs, I'll vote on scholarship.
So, um, okay.
And so, I guess the way that would look is we'd meet, we would come to a consensus, and we're gonna present that to council. At that point, I don't really know that there's any other discussion, 'cause we wouldn't be able to.
No, no, we're gonna give our recommendations and that's it.
It'd be a yes or a no.
So, if you go, well, once we meet, then we'll have to put something in the post and put it out there, so that we can get applications, you know, for this year, it would be very rushed.
So, who's gonna finish the application, though, we've got a lot of edits on this.
I mean, I started, it's not, that's not, that'll take me ten minutes, if that, if you're okay with this, the way the format is.
Well, we, I mean, we've sort of changed a lot of things, so.
So, the changes I have is it's nonspecific on the money, it resides in the Town of Poetry and the ETJ of Poetry, and then adding in welding, welding on that, including but not limited to those items, and then it would be coming from donated funds, and then two council members and the mayor would meet to look over the essays and decide who is worthy.
GPA two oh and age seventeen and above.
Right, seventeen and up, yeah, I mean, like I said, it's.
Including trade schools and other.
Right, right, okay. Nice, okay, very good, all right. Okay, very good.
Just for those who didn't hear, that was Chad West volunteering the initial thousand dollars.
Thank you, Chad. So, we're funded, that's good. How about road repair, can we get?
Okay, scholarship, okay, so I can amend this, and then, I guess we can put the word out there, and.
First, let me send it to the school.
Would we be breaking any rules if you amended this and put it on the forum, so we can give you final markups, I mean, is that?
Can she not just send it to me and you for the markups?
Or, I guess you could just send it to the two of us.
Yes, we can, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so, we need a motion and we need it seconded.
So, do we have to former committee, or are we just passing the scholarship as a evidence?
Well, we can just assign, assign it to council members and mayor.
Do we have a motion?
We need a motion, please, okay. What is your motion?
So, I make a motion that we proceed with establishment of a poetry agricultural scholarship with the details of the application being worked out by mayor, myself, and Terry, who will also be the selection committee, and we get about it. We'll finish up the application and then get it published in the little newsletter and on the website. I don't think we have any requirement, papers or anything, like newspapers or.
No, that would cost us money, too. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Jaffe.
With a contention.
Who, with a contention, whoever remains seated up here after the election, they take it over if me and you are gone.
Don't threaten me with happiness.
Okay, so, we have a motion made by Councilmember Jaffe, seconded by Councilmember Fowler, all those in favor? And that passes unanimously.
Thank you, Chad.
Yeah, thank you, I think that's gonna be a worthy thing.
Okay, so, very good, I'm excited about that. All right, so, number eleven, discuss and take action on town council rules of decorum and procedural policy. A, so, limit experts to fifteen minutes each, and B, a cutoff time, so dividing conquer on this one. This has kind of held us up a few times, and so, I thought that those two might be items that we could have a consensus on.
So, I'd like, Lemon, go ahead.
Before you start, can we, can we kind of, again, maybe it's just for Mike's purposes, but can we recount what we're trying to accomplish with this? You know, what our goal is, so I know when we get there.
Absolutely, so, our meetings have gone long, and one of the ways that we thought that we might be able to address that is by the two items that we've discussed, we haven't had experts too much, but there has been an expert or two that went long, and then have a cutoff time of, I think, Councilmember Anderson suggested nine thirty, I suggested on the forum, I think, nine forty-five, so that, you know, we don't wear ourselves out, it's, you know, we're all up here as volunteers, public servants, you know.
And I guess I'd add one other point, my wife's the one that listened to all other councils, most of them that have a cutoff time have a provision that it can be extended by vote of the council.
Yeah, I mean, if you're, if you're half an item away, you might as well finish it.
Exactly, rather than put it off.
But the idea is that we would, at that cutoff time, if we did not change it, we would stop and everything would go to the next meeting, whatever that was.
So, my understanding is, so, if we have a cutoff time, then we'd go immediately to general comments, because we're, you know, that's at the end currently, and then adjourn after that, so, that way, we're not abusing ourselves, 'cause council members, you know, we're, we're public servants, but, you know, having meetings that go past ten o'clock is kind of brutal for some, especially if they get up and work.
But Tara, it's also brutal on the attendees.
And brutal on the, on the attendees, too.
Everybody's head's sore.
So, I know, I've discussed this with Secretary Shelton, and she has said, you know, we do, we have a very detailed and talkative council, and so, I'm guilty as well, and so, I think trying to wrap it up and not be so, you know, wordy on things perhaps, but we also know that when we have fewer, you know, citizens input, I actually rather like citizen input when it's, you know, productive and insightful, and, but when we have less of that, our meetings do run more quickly, so, you know, it's.
Well, you know, in doing a reread of the current decorum policy, I did find it interesting, and of course, we didn't know what we were doing when we did this, that I don't even see where it speaks to expert witnesses, so I guess it wouldn't be a bad idea to have something in there that addresses that category of spokesperson, it talks about citizens, but I don't, I didn't see where it spoke to expert witnesses. But, but at the same time, I don't remember any of them rambling on over fifteen minutes either, but that's okay, so to me, this is like a non-issue.
It's kind of a non-issue to me as well, but there's also issues that may require more than fifteen minutes, so I'm just.
To me, the expert witness is like on our calling, it's not like they're a nuisance to us, we want them to.
Well, I can remember at least two instances where the expert witness went on and on, and it was difficult to, you know, I don't know, I think.
I think it builds some borders, to your point, that we can always vote to allow it to be longer.
But it also says in here that the mayor, at any point that she feels like you're kind of diminishing return on information, can just say, that's enough.
Well, and I have, but it is a little uncomfortable to have to do that, if we have it in our rules, we can, you know, say, hey, you have fifteen minutes, and then if we want to extend it, then we can, but, you know, we're trying to be considerate of everyone's time, and time is a very valuable.
To me, the fifteen minutes is, I mean, I'll give you that one, I don't, I don't have a problem, 'cause if they're saying something smart, I'm gonna ask them to keep going, 'cause we need the information.
Well, and that is a choice, I think if we need significant expert, we would call a workshop for it, but just in a regular meeting, you know, we're trying, if we're trying to, you know, make sure that meetings are reasonable length, then that would be one little step, and it may apply once a year, but it may not, you know, be that significant.
And that's, that's the deal for me, is it might just apply once a year, so to me, this one is a solution, looking for a problem. I don't, I don't see that we need it.
But I, I agree with Terry, it's not a bad idea to have a boundary there, it's a reference point, so it doesn't hurt, we don't have to.
I have run into people who can talk, and talk, and talk, and so.
So, it brings up another train of thought for me, experts, and this is no bash on Glenn Strauss or anybody, just because he was recognized tonight, I would like to see experts recognized on the agenda that they're coming, and not a spot call, 'cause at that time, it's discretionary, so we need to take, and nothing you said tonight, Glenn, this is a thought that I've had in the past, so. So, if it's tit for tat, or there's one side of council that's really pushing for something, they wanna bring an expert, well, we need to see that. I mean, how, how are we gonna classify who's an expert, who's, who's doing that decision-making process? So, I'm not gonna vet everybody out, but I would like to see it on the agenda item, hey, we're gonna discuss water, I wanna recognize this person as an area expert in the field.
Well, so maybe when we add that language to the resolution, we say wherever possible, the expert witness should be identified.
That's right.
On the agenda.
I would tell you, none of the times out of ten, that we don't really know who will be here.
Well, I wouldn't make any demand on it, but I think if we can, you know, Mr. Bruce has been.
Yeah, if we invited a DOD guy or something, we know he's coming.
Well, and I have done that when I knew that they were coming.
Yeah, so that's what I said, you just put the language wherever possible.
Well, to my point, we've had remodelers who were called experts in the field, and then about lead paint, and then you have a guy who's worked for Sherman Williams for decades, who might really be the expert, so, to that point, it's discretionary, right? At least give me a heads up of who's gonna talk and who's being recognized as the witness in the subject area.
Well, I mean, I think on, we've had numerous occasions. Well, I mean, I think on, we've had numerous occasions where we didn't know who, who would be there and, I don't know, Ms. Shelton, do you, you have any experience on this?
Uh, excuse me, I would not even, uh, recognize that or put it, I mean, when you're bringing an expert in here, you need to let your peers know that you're bringing them in, but I wouldn't limit the time on, on them talking, but that's up to you guys. Um, I mean, how many times do you have an expert witness? Maybe once a year?
No, about, about ten meetings out of the year.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Well, then you wanna limit it.
And, and they're spot called, that's to my point, if we're gonna have an expert, everybody on this council needs to know who's the expert coming.
Well, I think the mayor has discretion on that.
And you, and you do.
That's what I'm trying to remove. Not, not your discretion, but the discretion of naming them.
But if you have that many expert witnesses, yes, limit it and put it in your resolution.
But I'd say that the fifteen minutes is, yeah, it can be overruled by the council if we say, yeah, let's let them talk, or we do it.
Well, I think.
Just take a little vote.
And I think in fairness to Jenna, she's thinking more expert like it's really, you know, a scientist or something, for us, an ex, the only difference between a citizen and an expert is, we call a citizen up to speak on something they have expertise on. More traditional expert would be someone you invite to attend the meeting and they come prepared to give a defense or whatever of their. So we, we sort of invoke expert, meeting by meeting, if we see somebody in the audience that we know is good on that topic, we'll call them up, so they didn't have to have signed up.
Well, and that has been helpful on many occasions, I believe.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, you know, when Bruce Sees come and, you know.
Especially since the town, until the invention of the forum, thank you, Simeon, the town really didn't have a lot of visibility into where we were in these topics, I mean, they didn't know how we were coming down on stuff and all that, so I think that's allowed us to involve them in a healthy way.
So is there a need to, to put the fifteen minutes in there if, if we have the ability?
Well, I.
If you have the ability to say, okay, thank you.
Well, I can remember one occasion where the fellow went on for thirty-five minutes or something and I was trying to, you know, end it and it was uncomfortable and I just feel like even if it happened once a year, um, it might be worth it to have that stopgap.
It's not gonna hurt anything, so I'd, I'd go ahead and put it in there.
And then the, um, cutoff time, um, I felt like maybe nine forty-five was reasonable, um, that way we get the general comments going and then we're out of here by ten or ten fifteen. And I don't wanna get too, too strict with it, so then we get behind on all of our agenda items.
Yeah, that seems a little short, I mean, as li, as much as I'd like to go home at nine forty-five, it's just, I don't know.
I mean, it's eight fifty-three right now and we've actually made good headway, because we haven't had, um, too many, I mean, I think part of it is the more citizens we hear from, the more time it takes, but let's go ahead and listen to some citizens on this particular topic, Chad West, okay, Patrick Smith. Okay, Glenn Strauss.
Pat.
Okay, Mike.
Griffin.
Griffin. Thank you, Ken.
Mike Griffin, six two four seven Dry Creek Run, um, I have, um, a little bit of an issue with, with, uh, pre-established cutoff time and I'm just asking you to, to consider whether or not it might make more sense to limit the number of agenda items that we have to, to go through or come up with a way of prioritizing the, uh, the agenda items that are, that are being presented. If there's more agenda items than go past the pre-established cutoff time, maybe we need to consider moving some of those things to another meeting, but instead of, if there's items that are of importance to the welfare of the community, we need to allow enough time to be able to carefully consider those, but please think about that, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Good feedback.
So to that point, um, I have kind of self-limited that, our first meeting had nineteen agenda items, it only lasted till ten thirty, um, with that number, and then we've had items, we've had meetings that were only twelve agenda items and lasted till eleven thirty, so it really depends on the item, it seems.
Well, and I would, if this were a math problem, I would argue that the variables are things like having information ahead of time that we can consider, use of the forum, you know, those kinds, I think things are going smoother tonight because some of these things we've been talking about.
On the forum.
Yeah, on the forum, rather than wearing people out here, so I think those will, will help it, but if we're, if we're chopping this thing up, again, I would like to see us specifically add for future council's purposes, something that says, you know, expert witness is someone who is whatever, because that's not defined anywhere in here. It talks about citizens, but I'd like to see us add that if we're gonna make some edits, I'd like to see us eliminate page five, because that drives people nuts, because I think we redacted it, and we didn't, we just have a page break in there.
And that's another reason I wanted to address it, to clean that up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then I think we always, in my mind, wanna be able to track the evolution of resolutions, so it needs to have like a different name or number or something, so the old one was twenty twenty-one dash ten dash zero one R and some, we need to be able to show that this is the same decorum, but it's amended, so the signature date is the current date, right, and there's something up in the numbering that says, so this one, this one is kind of like the earlier version, it doesn't like disappear, but it's no longer enforced because we have a newer one.
Since Jenna, you have the degree in publics.
You can, you can do that in the caption of the resolution, state that it's amending that resolution, and that way it identifies, and then on down in the body of the resolution, it will say that we are amending that resolution and state exactly what we're amending.
Yeah, 'cause usually in these things, I'll see, for other cities, it says that this basically takes the place of any earlier versions.
Right.
Or some language like that.
You can do that, but if you're gonna, you know, keep most of what it says, then you're only gonna amend certain parts of that resolution.
Just something, 'cause I, I can tell you, when I go through my folders on my computer to look up past stuff, I get lost in, whether this is like the live version or this is a draft version or this, I did that with the budgets, I couldn't for the life of me find budget number five, which I think is the one we finally approved, and so.
It's, the paperwork management is a challenge, I, I, yeah.
Yeah, well, and I'm not criticizing, I'm just saying, if we can do something to help that, so if we do put it on the website incorrectly, we'll, we'll know that, because we'll see, oh, this isn't the amended one, or this isn't the one we signed in March, whatever.
Okay, so, um, we have heard from all of our citizens and is there, is there any more discussion, we want, we know we need to eliminate page five, it was just, um.
Well, on page three, Tara, um, we, we, I don't know that we did a resolution, but we agreed as a council some time back that packets would be provided a hundred and twenty hours ahead, in this document on page three, it still says, uh, it's talking about posting it seventy-two hours, but it doesn't talk about to council members, so I think we ought to write that in here.
Yes, it, it did, I think that was when we didn't have a secretary and the, yes, that needs to be also amended.
Right, so it's specified, because right now, it could be easily seen as a he said, she said.
So we could actually, could we not, um, put a amended resolution that would include all these points and then go back to the original and, and document that?
Well, I mean, I, I'm the one that put this together, I'm happy to take editing and then push out what I think is the finished version.
Do you have a way to put it on the forum that shows changes, Mike?
Absolutely.
All right, so, um, so those are all valid points, um, any, any news or any word on the cutoff time?
I don't think we need it, and I know I'm in the minority, but I s, I still believe that we, we take care of the business until business is done, um, uh, the reason I said that was because I wanted to build a little time in there for me to, to think for a second. I, I just, I'm more of a, a systems thinker and I could see a point in the future where if a mayor wants something to not go, then it gets added to the back of the agenda, the cutoff time comes up and it keeps rolling and rolling and rolling and rolling, um, because, you know, people are people and, and they tend to wanna do what they wanna do. I think that we should sit there and if we have an agenda that is going over some pre-marked time, then we should go ahead and, you know, finish the agenda, or we should call out that we want to cut, um, the, the meeting short, but I, I just, I say we, we let the meetings roll to their natural conclusion.
Actually, we have a remedy, Brian, for that, and that's it, if there's something that needs to be addressed, that we vote to address it. This, nine forty-five is a target and it's a self-discipline, saying this is when we're gonna leave and, but it doesn't mean that we can't stay and address something.
Right.
We can, it just takes a vote, but it's a way of establishing self-discipline and order.
And on the flip side, right now, we can vote to table remaining motions, so we have the ability to call a meeting whenever we want, so, um, there's, there's all kinds of self-discipline that can, can be imposed, we're just on opposite sides of it.
Right, and I, yeah, and I'm kinda with you, Brian, I'm not, I don't think it's a, I don't see it solving a problem we have, so I would be opposed, and, and the good news is, we're gonna vote after somebody makes a motion, so it may not pass, so.
Yeah, so I know the last meeting, um, we finished at, um, nine forty-three and that was, um, I mean, and I was trying to move things along, I am learning that, you know, trying to keep it at, at twelve, twelve, thirteen items maximum, um, is a good number, so when I tell the council, I'm sorry, we're full, I'm, that's what I'm trying to do, because it, beyond that, it gets unreasonable, I believe, but I don't, I wouldn't, I mean, if we naturally ended at, um, nine forty-three last time, I think, um, if we set it at, some cities will set it at ten, um, I don't have, I, I think to the point of, you know, if we put the most urgent things at the top of the agenda and then the things that aren't so much, so urgent, then we could put them at the bottom and then they wouldn't necessarily, it wouldn't necessarily matter if they were put to the next, and we actually, you know, at least they've seen it, they've seen the material on it and then you have time to think about it until the next meeting.
But to Brian's point, urgent to who?
Yeah, urgent is subjective, for instance, number one here was our, our spring cleanup day, now, it has a date on it and so that's an urgent matter, because it has a date, however, spring cleanup day is not an urgent matter.
Not as compared to paying bills and budgets and other things.
Right, so it, it is subjective, so it's, it's, it's difficult to say, well, we'll just order it in order of priority based on urgency, but, but that still becomes a subjective point.
And if we're willing to spend a little more time on the forum, five to six of these agenda items probably could have been fleshed out on there.
Yeah, really quick.
A small discussion here, April fifteenth, here you hear you, and it's done.
Yeah, I didn't, I mean, I didn't know until I got the packet that date was being considered, so I didn't have any opinion.
I agree with that, I mean, we're here to get stuff done, I mean, we really have had to take long meetings in the past, not because we were that slow, but because there was a lot to discuss, and if one meeting runs a little late, we always have the ability to cut it off.
And a lot of times we're coming cold to the topics, so we don't know what we're gonna be discussing, it takes a little time to put there.
Well, and I had reached out to you, Jenna, and I don't know that you responded or not, it's okay, but as to whether you could give us a peek at the agenda, rough or draft, just so we could kinda get a feel, I mean, even if it was subject to change, we could at least be thinking about, okay, we're gonna talk about these things, um, but, you know, absent that, I'm kinda with Brian, we just come in cold, I mean, we're just.
Well, okay, so, I mean, I, it's hard for me to, I understand what you're saying, um, on this end of things, it's kinda like, you know, I think I've said this before, it's kinda like preparing for a term paper and you've only got, you know, three or four weeks to get a term paper done that's forty to a hundred pages long, so on this end of things, it's, it is very similar to that, um, in college, you know, you, and if you change that up, it's, it is hard, but I think the whole thing, uh, idea of the public forum is, is, of course, it's newer, but it's a whole nother task for me to have to post things on the public forum, and maybe that's something the secretary could do, but.
Well, things like agendas, I think that would just be an email from the secretary to the council, that wouldn't be on the forum, that would just be to the council, just giving us a heads up, I mean, we did that one cycle, four secretaries back or something, where she said, hey, so far, I have these three things on the agenda, does anybody wanna add anything, and to me, that was very helpful.
So that was Teresa, um, we were finally, that was the third month she was here, we were kinda getting in this groove and it was so nice.
Yeah, it was, that was huge.
Like we could, we could, yeah, so we were able to plan ahead, so.
Because if I see one, then I could suggest that, okay, let's take this to the forum.
Right.
Pre-work it and then it's just a vote.
And part of the, I think part of what we're seeing is the lack of a secretary, like, so when we finally get it in the groove of that kind of scheduling, you know, we've only had Jenna here for a month and now her schedule's changing, but, um, having that consistency would really help, I think.
Well, and I think, and to me, that would be another argument for not making changes, because we don't even know how we're gonna perform when we're running on all eight cylinders as opposed to three, so.
I, I think in giving us at least three or four months of consistent secretarial help will make all the difference.
Absolutely, it's changed my life.
And, and we could actually, you know, put some of those things in the forum or email out, like you're saying, hey, we got, we're, we're, you know, we got these things, um, we're looking at, and that way you can lull it over and you're, you know, have a little time.
Well, and we can also pace ourselves, because we, we, we know a lot of the thi, well, we know the things we have to do by law, so those can be calendared, right, a year ahead practically, things that have to be renewed or whatever, we kinda have a feel for the bigger issues, so I don't know, it just seems like at some point, kinda to Mike Griffin's point, we could just sort of, okay, we're full, this is going to next month, that's just the way it is.
And I have started doing that several months ago, just started doing, but it really, I think a lot of times, if we have, you know, five or six people talking on every topic, then that does extend the meetings, i- it does significantly.
Well, yeah, I think, I don't know, I, I've heard anecdotal information about how much time citizens are taking up in the meeting, so I'm not gonna testify to that, but.
It's not up for consideration.
Yeah, I think it's just a matter of, well, it, yeah, it, it could be, because we say, just making changes to the decorum policy, right? Is it only those two items, the fifteen minutes?
Well, that's, that's what we have, um, right.
A semicolon implies a dependent clause.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I make a motion, we do nothing then.
Second.
Hey, we got a live motion. You gotta vote now.
Would you reword that, please?
Do nothing?
Call for a vote. Well, I mean, we don't, we don't take action on either of these two suggestions.
Then it dies, um, you don't have to make a motion for that.
Well, however, it did. Next?
You don't have to do, yeah.
We're headed to nine forty-five, let's keep moving.
So it is now nine oh seven, we only have two more items, so let's.
Perfect.
All right.
See, Tom, we don't need a cutoff or a mandatory.
You know, well, I, again, I think as we streamline things, um, hopefully we can be self-disciplined enough, I, I am, we're working on it, so, number twelve, discuss and take action on addressing citizens' requests to have tech stock, consider installing a flashing light for safety at two intersections, FM nine eighty-six and FM thirty-four eighty-six and FM, uh, nine eighty-six and FM fifteen sixty-five, so I've had at least five requests and then there was, um, actually, there was a wreck on that intersection of thirty-four eighty-six and nine eighty-six just tonight, um, so, um, any comments on that, and this was.
I think it's a great idea, 'cause I, what I see at that thirty-four eighty-six, it's like they're playing a game of I can get across without stopping, I've seen people go across that intersection at sixty miles an hour, never even slow down, it's like Russian roulette.
What's a flashing light do to, to someone that knows they're playing Russian roulette?
Well, and, and we could amend that, it could be a regular light, um, you know, maybe we, 'cause I actually, um.
Have we reached out to the citizens on the corner? There's three citizens there.
So let's look at, um, oh, you said it's on the corner, well.
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious what their thoughts are of, of a not light flashing in their bedroom windows.
That's true.
Well, I have got, one of the requests was from, um, the Robinsons, who, um, get someone, I, I was out there the night that someone who, I guess, was, um, under the influence of some sort of drug, ran through, there's, there's, you know, they have the, the fence there and was only like twenty feet from their daughter's bedroom. And so it was very alarming, my sign was damaged, um, so then they say they were very concerned, because it happens several times a year, um, and they would really like to see something there, um, so.
And where are they at?
They're, they're on the corner there, in the.
At the end of fifteen sixty-five.
Yeah, this is, okay.
You know, the other thing I would consider, Tara, and I see it from time to time, is just warnings that cross-traffic doesn't stop, right, so as you approach nine eighty-six, there'd be a huge sign that says cross-traffic doesn't stop, okay, so in other words, this is not a four-way, and the same when you approach nine eighty-six on fifteen sixty-five, just a reminder, the people going across to you are not stopping.
Yeah, that's a little different, 'cause I'm all for safety, but.
I hadn't seen any crash studies, I, I mean, obviously.
There's more traffic that go through those intersections than before.
Well, I think, my personal opinion is that thirty-four eighty-six is the new. Well, I think, my personal opinion is that thirty-four eighty-six is the new two seventy-six, fifteen sixty-five.
I, I think you're right.
Where we were killing people up there, I think we're gonna start killing them down here.
I think it's coming.
Yeah.
But we don't have anything.
Well, if we can be proactive, I'm all for that, rather than.
And we got the flashing lights, amber lights, red lights.
That's what I'm saying, I mean.
Well, perhaps we, um, submit it to Tech Dot to consider both.
Well, yeah, or we could just ask them to do a study, right, a study that we want them to do something, and.
Well, I mean, I've had requests for both.
Say again, Mike?
They can do a study, we won't understand it, and then they'll come out and do something they don't tell us about, like lowering our speed limit.
That's the way.
But, but seriously, they would be the one, cause they have signs and lights, and probably wouldn't, I don't know if it'd be a red light, cause wouldn't a red light mean you're gonna stop?
Yes, it would.
Thirty-four eighty-six. I mean, they also have those stop signs that when the car approaches them, they start flashing.
Yeah.
You know, to remind you it's a real-life stop sign.
Say, Tara, are, you're gonna go to that, uh, conference over in Greenville?
There's a conference in Paris.
In Paris?
In Paris.
Well, I went to the one in Greenville, and, anyway, the, the question on lights and things like this seems like they have got a lot of dittle-dittle installed. So I'm not optimistic anything will happen, but I think it's worth pressing, and I pressed some on the, when I was at the one in Greenville. And you get a lot of promises and co, good comments, but then they don't even return calls, much less, uh, call back.
Well, at least we know from the study that they did, it took a year, and I kept asking, but they did finish, and they did submit it, it just took some time. And government works very slowly, is one of the frustrations there, um, so I know that, in talking with, uh, Secretary Shelton about that, she said, yeah, it, it will take some time, so it's not gonna happen next month.
Should we have citizen input?
We do. Okay, Royce Frankham. Come up and state your address, name and address, please.
Yeah, my name, my name is Royce Frankham, I live at one nine, what, eighty-nine, uh, nine eighty-six, and, yeah, I'm, I'd be interested in having Tech Dot come out and do something about, um, a, a flashing light at both, at both intersections. I've been living in Port Tree for about ten years now, and I'll keep this real short, but, you know, back in the day, that was lead line road, is what they called that. It was a gravel road the first half of.
Nobody went on it.
And no one did, yeah, unless you had a four-wheel-drive truck. But now, since Tech Dot's come over and moved it over, kinda like in line with two forty-nine here, boom, 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 and just today, as I was driving through there with my daughter, what happened? Boom, I got video if you want on my phone, if you wanna see it, duly, you know, truck, boom, anyway, I think the ambulance had to come, but, long story short, when me and my family were coming down that road, I mean, now it's two-lane blacktop road, and I mean, everybody's distracted, I mean, that's great having that sign where you got the, uh, uh, you know, the other side, don't stop, that's great and all, but you get these, no disrespect, but young teenage drivers, and, and they're distracted by their cellphone or their music or la, 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 they're not gonna be reading that sign. A flashing light's gonna get, be a little bit better than that, and I understand that, I mean, and just like here at fifteen sixty-five, I mean, there's a lot more traffic coming through this part of town now. I mean, it, it is what it is. I mean, I, like I said, I've been here for ten years, and it used to be back in the day, if they didn't turn on fifteen sixty-five, they went that way, they lived down that way. But, I mean, that's great that Tech Dot came in here and lowered the speed limit by five miles an hour, I mean, now it's, I mean, fifty-five, it's fifty, I mean, that's great. I mean, if I had it my way and had to say it was on the board of Tech Dot, uh, I don't know the gentleman's name, but the con farmer down there, by, by the pass, start from his property all the way down past the, uh, uh, the, I guess, by the cemetery, cause that's where the bulk of the houses are at, slow it down to about forty, forty-five. I mean, when I'm, when I'm trucking on into coming into Terrell, uh, off eighty, I'm going seventy-five, sixty, seventy-five, whatever the speed limit is, but soon as I start coming to Terrell, they want you to slow down, because there's a lot more people, I mean, people coming in and out of your, your store there, people coming out of the school, and my wife works there, I mean, it's just, it would be so, something for awareness there a little bit. I, I don't wanna put a red light there, you know, down nine eighty-six, if you wanna, you know, definitely stop coming in, you know, on, on, uh, thirty-four eighty, eighty-six, whatever it's called, you know, but, cause I don't wanna slow down coming through there, I wanna slow down, but I don't wanna come to a stop, but, but a, a flashing light at both places, just, uh, as awareness, you know, if it flashes in someone's bedroom at night, that's just, you know, I get headlights in my windows at night too, so, anyway, that's what I wanted to say, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Royce.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah, so like a flashing yellow, I think.
Okay, Chad West.
But who's describing nonstop, I saw.
Chad West, one nine three seven zero, FM nine eighty-six, I guess, obviously, public safety, we need to do something there, and I've been in a situation where somebody ran that right in front of me at, uh, two forty-nine and nine eighty-six, but I, I still have the same concerns as Councilman Fowler about, you know, the flashing light, and is that, you know, a bad thing for the people who live around there? And I, I guess, Mike, you brought up the rumble strips, and what I'm thinking of is, when we go to DFW Airport, you gotta stop and get the ticket, you gotta pay, is they put that rumble strip down there to let you know that you have to come to a stop, and to me, that may be something that would be an easier, simpler solution on the highways, to, to at least tell people that they're gonna have to come to a stop.
Thank you.
But at the end of the day, those aren't our roads, so we can't just go out there and just grind grooves in them, they gotta.
So I did, um, we did talk when there was the wreck, um, at the, well, right up this curve, on the diesel wreck, and this, in, a year ago, um, I did request, say, is there a possibility of rumble strips, and, um, nothing came of it, so I, that didn't happen.
Well, normally, you wouldn't put a rumble strip on a continuous roadway, but where there's a stop expected, that's right, I think it's fair game.
Yeah, well, he was talking about, um, he, cause, um, the Tech Dot representative, um, James Atkins for Hunt County area, he was talking, hey, this doesn't only happen on this curve necessarily, but what you, you need something in the, at that intersection, he mentioned the intersection, he was saying, we need something there, you know, he did recognize that. So, um, Ms. Debbie Emmard was not able to be here tonight, but I did enter that, and she wanted to have a statement, so I'm just gonna read her statement. "I can't be here, there tonight, but I personally witnessed two rollovers from people not slowing down to turn. One of those was a head-on wreck, and personally was southbound at nine eighty-six, saw that a big rig was coming on thirty-four eighty-six, and obviously too fast to stop, so I stopped way back from the intersection. He turned onto nine eighty-six, came over, way over into the lane, clear off on shoulder tires, lifted off ground, thought he was going to flip, he regained control and sped off, and turned on fifteen sixty-five. If I had not stopped, he would have run head-on into me. I believe it needs to be a regular traffic light, not just a flashing yellow light, Debbie Emmard." So she is one of the five citizens who did reach out, and so her, that's her statement. Okay, Patrick Smith. All right, so.
Tara, I would, I would recommend, I don't know what the process is, I mean, we must know it, cause we got the speed limit lowered on nine eighty-six, but to petition, appeal, whatever, to DOT to give us options for, you know, providing safer intersections at those two locations.
Okay.
Based on our anecdotal data that bad things are happening there right now, and we need something.
I, I think we're all for safety, I mean, I'm, that, that's the majority of my job is, is, uh, running, running rescue calls, but I don't wanna be dismissive, to your point, of a light flashing in somebody's bedroom window if Tech Dot gives us a better idea. I don't wanna be dismissive of the fact that there are more wrecks occurring, but more wrecks are occurring because there is more traffic, and the better they improve the roads, the more wrecks we're gonna have, so, so w- we need to yield to the experts, Tech Dot has their own individual group that will study this intersection, hopefully per our request, but, I mean, they are inevitable, so whatever we can do to improve that, I get it, I, I seen a funny meme today that the horses used to take us to town, now you see people put horses in their trailer and take them to town. So we are evolving, and we're gonna continue to have problems. I don't wanna just throw a big flashing light out there to make everybody feel good if Tech Dot just says, no, the, the, there's not evidence of that many more wrecks at this intersection. Cause we need to know how many wrecks were at that intersection before, everybody wants to sensationalize and say, well, there's more wrecks now, but how do we know that? How do we know there's not the same amount of wrecks at that intersection?
I have asked for that data, and I have not yet received that.
I don't think I'm any more observant than I ever have, and I make just many trips to town, and I see a lot of accidents there.
Yeah, I'm all for them doing the study and them giving us their opinion.
Okay.
Who would need to have that data? I mean, sheriff?
Probably the fire departments, through, uh, uh.
Yeah, anybody that responded.
Text pur, or, I don't know, Bruce is not here, FIRS, and we have to report it to the state of Texas, so.
But that's if you respond.
True, but I'm sure Texas DPS is usually who makes it, or county, there haven't, there's some kinda system, state system that's.
Yeah.
But now how, how available it is is another story.
And we are supposed to play, put that, um, data on our website, but I haven't received any data to.
Well, I'm for reaching out to Tech Dot, they are the experts, we shouldn't be so prideful as to think that we're gonna know as much as them, I mean, they do this every day, so I think reaching out to them, at least hearing them out, hearing their opinion, letting them do a study's a good thing. Safety's not something we wanna joke around with, or, um, not take into ample consideration, and at least reach out to the experts.
Yeah, I agree, and I.
And hear what they have to say.
I, I suspect they're gonna err on the side of doing nothing, cause I know at Tiger Mart, it took lots of people dying before they put in a light, and they said that, they said a certain number of people have to die.
They wouldn't give you a number, but.
Right, they wouldn't give us a number, but they said that's the fact, but that's okay, and the thing I would add to the conversation would be, can we ask Tech Dot to like, be a little more connected to us if they do do this study, so we kinda know what they're doing, and what the range of options are, and.
It doesn't hurt to ask, but it took them a year.
Well, no, I just ask, just ask that way, you know, if they don't.
So do we need to vote on this, or?
So we need to, we need a, um.
I don't think we have to vote to ask for. Last time, we just authorized the mayor to go.
Well, we'll need, I think we'll need some sort of mint entry, so we will need to vote on, I believe, if you're asking me to do an action.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we did that last time.
We need an official, official vote, so we need a motion for what you want, want the mayor to do.
So I, I move that we ask the mayor to, um, reach out to Tech Dot to, um, conduct a study at these two addresses to find out what our best options are.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Vincent, second by White, to, and, uh, ask the mayor to take action requesting a study at these two intersections. All those in favor, and that passes unanimously. Okay, last item, discuss and take action on continuity planning for the town election transition, this was on the public forum, and Councilmember, um, Jaffe, you had presented this, so please take it away.
Okay, so, and I agree with, uh, Jana's sort of assessment of this, I'm thinking more from corporate world, not governmental world. Um, but I just wanted to make sure, and I'm not predicting any outcomes, but I just think it's good to have some understanding of when humans change in the mayor role or councilman position, how do things like passwords and computers, I mean, right now, we're in this weird place where the mayor has our town office in her store, and we're appreciative of that, but normally, it would be in some neutral place. So I guess my assessment is, if Jana is comfortable, and the council is comfortable with what she's given us in this memo, I'm good. Cause it's, I called the question, we've addressed it, if we feel confident, that way, if there is a wrestling contest, if something happens, you know, we have this conversation, and we'll be reminded of this conversation, and I'm good.
Is there, is there a, a reason that we couldn't put our passwords into some kinda Word document and have those saved in our files somewhere? I mean, let, let's not even say there's an overturn, what if there's a catastrophe or, or a death? We have no YouTube passwords, no IT passwords, no passwords to anything, I'm not sure that anybody else has a password to the alarm system in the city hall. I mean, is there a way to capture this in some kinda Word document that we can save?
If, if we did capture it, I would recommend it's in an encrypted file.
Right, I'm okay with that, that's not my area expertise, but at any time, we could be hamstrung if an accident happened.
But, I mean, it goes, as a former, current, I don't know, IT professional, um, it goes against every fiber of my being to recommend somebody to write down their password.
So what's your recommendations on? Yeah, would you say a?
On their safekeeping?
A physical record, like, put in a little twenty-dollar safe, would that be better?
No.
No?
No.
All right, well, what is the best?
An encrypted file on a, a, a password management system would probably be the best, but still, you shouldn't. First off, we shouldn't be in a position where we don't have assets that, we don't have a, a, um, IT person who can reset a password for us. If we can reach out to Google, or Microsoft, or whatever, they can reset passwords on accounts, so we don't have to worry about permanently being locked out of an account. So that, that's one, but, uh, if you feel it necessary, then, and a password management system would probably be the best option, and it's stored encrypted, but then it allows anybody who has pa, the password to that password management system to, to access it. And once more than one person has access to a system, nobody is accountable for access to that system, unless you go into the whole logging aspect, and we don't have our own service that we can do logging, et cetera. So for the type of system that we're on, I'd say, when, um, I leave office, cause I'm the only one guaranteed to leave office, then, um, I just leave my system. It, it doesn't go anywhere, and if I pass away, then you guys call up Microsoft and say, we need access to this account, and, you know, and that's how you move forward.
So I don't know if Josh is still here, what about all the other IT stuff in the background, I'm sure he has accounts set up with our, I, I wouldn't even be able to speak on.
Email providers.
I will tell you that, um, to speak to your, um, he, he's been trying to get me on a password encryption, he has a password encryption account, and I actually have it on my phone as well, and so it keeps all the password, he keeps, um, a plethora, um, to use that word again, um, of passwords, and so he has it on all of the council, I believe, and, of course, you guys made your own, and it, you know, after he had it, set it up.
Yeah, he doesn't know those.
He doesn't know yours now, but, um, I guess.
Well, he can at least, I remember him saying he could at least look at all of our emails if he wanted to, not, trust him not to, but that there's sort of a super admin account set up over all six emails, right?
That's my understanding.
Yeah, so I mean, it's really just that one password that you'd need.
How do bigger towns, I guess, they just have staff members that deal with it, right?
They usually have the IT departments that keep up with the.
Well, maybe we do nothing else.
Yes.
Do nothing and hope for the best.
But you only have two computers.
There's a strategy.
Well, I mean, Josh was entrusted at this school to do a lot of their work, and, I mean, he, you know, I think, I may be biased, but he's a very trustworthy individual.
Okay.
And he's been very competent over.
But we also need a policy for when it's not Josh, or.
Right, no, I agree.
Yeah, we're gonna have to organize that, yeah.
When you get your city hall, and you start having things separate, you know, you can secure it like, like you're wanting to do, you'll get that.
Right, I think we're, it's a little premature, but we're hopefully getting there.
But with the temporary, it's far.
I appreciate you volunteering to help out in IT after you step down.
Yeah, you'll have a free time.
I was about to say something, but now that you said that, maybe not. Let's, let's just play it my ear.
Okay, they're doing nothing on that one, and I'm like that.
Okay.
Well, I, I do wanna bring up one thing, and I mean, it's kind of, for me, I don't know if everybody's thinking about it as much as I am, but it's the elephant in this room, up in my head, of if the mayor specifically, if that switches over to somebody new, having everything at the Tac and Ag is not gonna be sustainable. We can't have a new mayor going to Tac and Ag, even if you were willing to continue to lend it to the town.
Well, they can't sit in my chair, cause I have to sit in that chair.
Exactly, so I think the biggest thing for transferring would be to make sure that we can do stuff at the new town hall. So I, I question how much needs to be done until we can move in, is it the law that, um, we can't do any operation in there until ADA comply?
It has to have a certi, certificate of occupancy.
Well, but we, we could certainly, the new council could certainly establish a temporary location, or something, I mean, I think that's a problem, the next council, whoever that is, can.
What do you think, Jana?
All right, as long as we're thinking that way, cause that would be.
We need to get that new city hall going.
Well, and I have been trying, I, I mean, we've been around this block a while, so.
And, and it could be that you would have to consider a temporary location.
Yeah, we may just need to go rent a little office somewhere, and do that temporarily until we finish, uh, plumbing and whatever else. We're kinda running short on time to put those kinds of things together.
We are, and as, as long as we're thinking towards that, that's the main reason I bring it up, because.
Well, that was my point, bringing the topic up, period, was, it could happen, I'm not predicting anything, I don't know any more than anybody else knows, but, you know, it's.
Well, regardless.
If it doesn't happen here, it could happen in a future council, but to your point, if we're better, you know, honed, it's not a big deal.
Well, and then that brings up the website maintenance, too, I mean, we're, we're maintaining that. I mean, we're, we're maintaining that, if we have charged the town, it's costing us probably five thousand a year or something. But we're happy to do that, and, you know, then we have the audiographer, my husband, so, I mean, it's, but we're happy to do that, too, so, but, well.
Well, thank you.
Anything else on this?
I'm good with the memo.
Okay.
Yep, me too.
All right, so that is the la- it is nine thirty, and we have general public comments. Oh, quite a few. Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, I didn't, okay, so we do have some citizens to speak on the town election transition. Chad West, Kevin Sinkovich, Shelley Smith, Mike Griffin. Okay. All right, general public comment.
Say your butt.
Yes. If we got out of here by nine forty-two, that would be improvement. Chuck Gilly.
Does he have your last name, Charlie?
G I L L E Y.
Thank you.
So, good evening. My name is Chuck Gilly, and I'm not a resident of Poetry, but I am the deacon of this church, Faith Temple Baptist Church.
Can you state your address, please? That's standard.
What's the address here?
Oh, your address at your home, I'm sorry, that's, that's.
Twenty-one seventy-eight Sally Gooden Lane.
Okay. Thank you.
So I just wanna clear some things up. There's a video that was out on a post, okay? Last week about Faith Temple and me. I have a conversation with the mayor constantly, because y'all use the facilities, okay? Did not ask her about her faith. When I spoke to her this past week, what I asked her is, the city going to have a meeting here on the eighteenth, which was Saturday, last Saturday, because we were planning on doing some stuff up here in the church. Didn't want there to be a conflict, so during that phone call, nothing came up about any faith at all. Faith Temple Baptist Church is here for the community. It's in y'all's community, it's here to serve and support the community. That's all I have to say. I just did not agree with the post, the post has been taken down now, but it came to me as, it presented my name and the church's name, and I just did not agree with it, okay? So I just wanted to speak my, my mind and let everybody be aware.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you, Chuck, and I may be the only one up here that's clueless, and I don't need you to mention it, because it may serve a bad purpose.
Well, we can't really talk about.
Right, and that's fine, I'm just saying, I'm, I have no idea.
Okay, Chad McFarland, yeah, we can't really talk about that.
I'm hoping that's a good thing, that I don't know.
See, I think, Chad, I think you give it to the mayor, and then the mayor determines.
You're supposed to give it to me, and then I pass it around.
Everybody gets one of those.
Okay, that would be, that would be good. There we go.
Chad McFarland, one nine eight five O F M nine eighty-six. The first page that I handed y'all is a screenshot that I took from a shipping service that I use. And if you look at the, I entered my address, it's Poetry, and the system suggests that I change it to Terrell. That's important for sales tax reasons. If you try to change your address on Amazon to Poetry, it will not let you. That's also important for sales tax reasons. If you look on Google for the town of Poetry, the town limits do not show up on Google Maps. I addressed this, I made the ma- mayor aware of this back in November. We are not gonna get any sales tax money from Amazon, or eBay, or just about any major online seller, until the map of Poetry shows up on Google Maps, and these businesses can classify the addresses of this poetry. Now, I was lucky enough to have lunch with the city attorney of Terrell last week at Rotary, and asked him this question about how to update the map, because if you can imagine, Terrell's had some experience updating their maps. And it's just a matter of, so I've got some free legal advice here for the town, is matter of contacting Hunt County, and the ca- the county mapping to update Google Maps. Because once, we're not gonna get any sales tax money from these online sellers until these maps are done. So I've given y'all some direction on how to get this done. So Tara, instead of running around town and spreading rumors about your political opponents trying to bankrupt this town, why don't you do your job and get this town listed on the map, so we can get some sales tax money?
Thank you, Chad. So a factual response to that is, I've already talked to Tech, you could sit down now. A factual response is that I've talked to the comptroller, and we will receive monies regardless of what the address says. It's based on their jurisdiction, that's what she said, so.
If a business doesn't know we live in Poetry.
Okay, so.
They're not gonna know where to submit the sales tax.
I, we heard you, we heard you, I'm not saying that we didn't hear you. All right, Jack Sinkovich. Okay, Catherine Hartwood. Okay, Shelley Smith.
Okay, I would like to ask what y'all are gonna do to ensure that the voting this time is done with honesty and integrity. Here's what most people don't know. When we had the election for incorporation, Hunt County reported that there were five hundred and seventy eligible voters in Hunt County. We've learned that the second election, the mayoral election, the number of eligible voters jumped to nine hundred and eighty-one, which added an additional four hundred and eleven voters to the list. Let's go back to the incorporation election, the one where only five hundred and seventy Hunt County voters were on the list. Does it shock you to learn that five hundred and seventy-eight voted in that election? Five hundred and seventy-eight in Hunt County, when there's only five hundred and seventy eligible voters? That's one hundred percent turnout plus eight? It's inferred that Tara and Dorothy Dillon made the list for Hunt County to go by. Kaufman County has managed to lose the list they were given, but when you go back to the voter rolls of those Kaufman residents, it's shocking to see that there were Terrell City residents who actually voted in the incorporation. I ask that this go-round, you please check the lists and keep the election fair and honest. And the four hundred and eleven, these are people who had no say in incorporation, but are now subject to the new fees, taxes, and someday zoning and property taxes. Four hundred and eleven who had no choice, no vote, no say, and that's only Hunt County. We have no idea how many were added in Kaufman County.
Thank you, Shelley. So, um, one factual response, there were eighteen hundred and fifteen, eight, eight hundred and fifteen total voters in the first election. Yes, ma'am, I'm aware. All right, Robin Bowles. Okay, Mike Griffin. Okay. Okay, so the time is now nine forty, we made a record there.